7.9. If the chambers are cleared, the only members of the pub, only members of the public that will be allowed to remain are representatives of the press or other news media unless those individuals are participating in the disturbance. At that time, the city council may, in its discretion, establish a procedure for readmitting individuals not responsible for disruption. As a reminder, members of the public continue, members of the public continue to have the option to attend this meeting virtually. And as a final clerk announcement, recognition item R3 has been moved to a future agenda item. Agenda. Thank you.
And everyone, join me in the wild, please, for our first recognition. And do we have any comments from the Equity and Human Relations Committee before we start? Or will y'all just join us in the front? If you have something, you can join us. We'll sort it out. All right. All right. Thank you for your grace. We are beginning our recognition this evening with the Equity and Human Relations Rewards. I see some of our commission members in the front row. Thank you for your service. The Equity and Human Relations Awards Program was created by the Culver City Equity and Human Relations Advisory Committee to honor outstanding individuals for their contributions to equity and human relations in Culver City. Our recipients this year embody inclusiveness, altruism, and giving, making Culver City a better place for everyone to live. The awards are presented to no more than one person or one entity in each of the following categories: a Culver City resident or person employed in Culver City, a Culver City student, a Culver City business, a nonprofit organization serving the Culver City area. And each honoree is presented a medallion by the Culver City Council. So we'll start first with Abby Klein. Feel free to join us in the front if you're with us. Abby Klein was a selected recipient of the Equity and Human Relations Award in the Individual category. Ms. Klein is a La Biona Elementary School teacher who organized Rainbow Day, which is fantastic. I was able to go to some of it. During Rainbow Day this past February, La Biona students and educators joined Lynn's and Teddy from the beloved web series Queer Kid Stuff for an action-packed day of age-relevant LGBTQ+ affirming in-school programming. Students experienced grade-wide rainbow storytime sessions, interactive workshops on gender and identity, and an all-school assembly performance filled with songs and engaging original storytelling. Faculty and staff then participated in professional development sessions to help them implement an inclusive school environment. It was a day of warmth and laughter as the school celebrated the vibrant colors of acceptance. Thank you so much, Ms. Klein, for your leadership.
I just thank you all so much for this recognition. I've been teaching for 35 years, and I just feel really strongly that we need to be having these conversations with kids at a very young age. The American Academy of Pediatrics says kids know their gender identity by the age of four, so we need to have developmentally appropriate conversations about this so all kids who walk through the doors of our classrooms feel affirmed, accepted, loved, and we are creating safe, inclusive environments where everyone feels like they belong. So thank you for this recognition. I really appreciate it.
And Haifa Mamar, would you like to say something?
I just want to acknowledge your work, and thank you so much. I'm part of the committee. My name is Haifa Mamar, and we have a nice medallion for you from this, from our committee. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Sofia Gomez. Okay, Ms. Gomez was selected as a recipient of the Equity and Human Relations Award in the Individual category. Prior to graduating from Culver City High School this past spring, Sofia served as a student board member on the Culver City Unified District Board of Education and collaborated closely with board members. She was known for her innovative approach to engaging the high school's student body. She tirelessly organized participatory town hall meetings, gathering input from students who were closest to the issues at hand and who, due to their backgrounds, are typically not heard. The valuable insights from the student input enabled members of the school board to address pressing concerns in a manner that was equitable and responsive to the needs of the district's most underserved students. Thank you so much for your leadership, Ms. Gomez.
Thank you. Thank you, Sofia, for all the work, and thank the teachers at Culver High that make these students like Sofia come up with their own ideas and their own activism. And thank you so much for being part of our city and doing so much work. Thank you.
All right, next we have Duainus Family Childcare. Did I say that right? I might have gotten it wrong. Hopefully not. Round of applause. Am I saying it right, Duainus? Duainus? All right, wonderful. Duainus Family Childcare, founded by Rosa Martha and her husband Francisco. Duainus Family Childcare has been selected to receive the Equity and Human Relations Award in the Business category. Duainus Family Childcare promotes equity for parents at a time when childcare costs for lower-income and even middle-income families can be prohibitive. It is very expensive, y'all. The affordable rates charged by the Duainus Family Childcare make high-quality childcare affordable. Because Duainus Family Childcare is located in Culver City, low-income as well as middle-income residents and those who work here are able to take their babies and toddlers for care near their homes and near their places of employment. Duainus Family Childcare opens its doors early in the morning and remains open until fairly late, which enables parents who do not work nine-to-five, a nine-to-five schedule, to comfortably drop off and pick up their children. As an extra benefit, they speak to children in Spanish, so many of their little ones become bilingual. Thank you so much for your leadership.
On behalf of the Equity and Human Relations Advisory Committee, we would like to present this medal to you. Gracias.
I think, I don't have, do we have one more search? I don't think. I don't have one more search, but we can talk about it. I don't know, city clerk. Maybe we can get it to them before they leave. I have, the next one is for our black businesses. I promise I didn't take any certs home. So while we sort the certificate out, because we know that's just a commemoration, so we'll just celebrate them in spirit. A wonderful Rebecca Rona. Absolutely. Yes, I'm aware. I have the information. We just don't have the certificate, but we'll get it. So we're just going to celebrate just in spirit. So we're going to get the certificate to them. I don't know what happened to it, but that's all right. We'll get it. And she can come forward. We are here to celebrate. We will follow up with the certificate momentarily. So last but not least, give them a big round of applause. I'm so sorry. We got spirit. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you for your leadership. All right. No Limits for Deaf Children and Families, founded by Michelle Christie, has been selected to receive the Equity and Human Relations Award in the Nonprofit Organization category. No Limits provides inclusive and equitable education, eliminating systemic barriers for children with disabilities, including those for marginalized populations. Their aim is to empower all deaf children to mainstream with their hearing peers and pursue higher-level education. No Limits is the only no-cost after-school program in the nation dedicated to providing equity and inclusion for deaf children ages birth to 21 and their families. This nonprofit provides essential resources that deaf children from low-income and moderate-income families urgently require to thrive academically and in life. More than 75% of deaf children in California graduate high school functionally illiterate. The pandemic has exacerbated this challenge, particularly for the 91% of children served by the No Limits who are economically disadvantaged. The No Limits programming is comprised of seven core areas: parent involvement, social-emotional growth, audiology, speech and language, literacy, academics, and advocacy. Taken together, these enable No Limits to build a solid educational foundation for children and families, positioning them to thrive both in academic and social settings. Thank you so much and congratulations.
Thank you so much. We're actually at the Chase Bank Building real close by, so if you ever want a personal tour, I'd love to share more about No Limits with you.
We loved finding out about your nonprofit and your organization, everything that you do, and we were all blown away on the subcommittee and then when we presented to the rest of the committee. And so, easy pick for a nonprofit. Thank you.
And Honorable Mayor, we were hoping the committee requested we get all four together. If our award winners could come up.
And we'll make sure to get you that certificate. Fair enough, fair enough.
Thank you. Where were you in my life when I had my kids? Thank you so much.
Okay. All right, last but not least, we are going to do a recognition in honor of Black Business Month 2024 to Realty Executives Westside. Please join us in the wild. Wonderful to meet you. I'm just going to read a little bit from this, and then I'll pass it over. Hello. Hello. So good to see you. I know you have some, don't worry, I got you. All right. Okay. Whatever y'all want to do, I'm comfortable with it. We're getting comfy. All right, it is my honor to present this recognition to you all. On behalf of the City Council of the City of Culver City and in honor of Black Business Month 2024, Realty Executive Westside is commended for outstanding commitment and dedication to the city of Culver City. Black Business Month is a time to celebrate, acknowledge, and appreciate black-owned businesses across the nation and all that they represent in the country's continual striving for diversity and equality. For more than 25 years, Realty Executives Westside has been an organization who provides excellent service to the community by getting involved with numerous Culver City organizations to help champion important core values such as equity, diversity, inclusion, and are committed to advancing these principles in our society. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you so much. Thank you to the mayor, and thank you to everybody that has something to do with this. We really appreciate it. Thank you. Tri-Pacific Partners, DBA, Realty Executives Westside, Realty Executives Property Management, a wholly minority-owned office franchisee of Realty Executives International. In 1999, Peter Bledsoe became the owner of the Realty Executives Westside franchise, having previously been a successful real estate broker in the commercial, retail, residential income, and residential single-family home industry. Peter Bledsoe, a 43-year veteran of real estate professional, has provided excellent real estate brokerage and property management services to Culver City residents for the past 25 years. Honoredly discharged from the service in the United States Army as a sergeant, he earned his California Real Estate Sales License in 1981, and later the Broker License in 1990. Peter Bledsoe's professional real estate experience includes Sales Manager of 20th Century, Century 21 Service Company, and the founding Tri-Pacific Partners Incorporated. As a corporate broker of Realty Executives Westside, Peter Bledsoe was the HUD-certified broker, listing and selling over 7,000 government REO properties. Realty Executives Westside is a boutique firm catering to the most discerning clientele. Paula Jones is the Chief Operations Manager of Realty Executives Property Management that provides impeccable client services to property owners and tenants alike. Paula Jones is an invaluable part of why Realty Executives Property Management has been a successful, has been a success for more than 25 years. Dorothy Cleveland is the Chief Operations Manager of the Realty Executives Westside Brokerage. Over the past 28 years, Dorothy Cleveland has provided steadfast leadership to the Realty Executives Westside Brokerage. The contributions and professionalism of Dorothy Cleveland and Paula Jones have been an indispensable part of the overall operational success of Realty Executives Westside throughout the years. Luther Henderson has been a broker associate with Realty Executives Westside for more than 18 years and is a, is the Communications Director. He has over 35 years' experience in the commercial, residential income as a real estate broker. A retired community college professor with a doctorate in education, Luther Henderson has represented numerous clients in successful real estate transactions. Based in Culver City, Realty Executives Westside's community involvement includes the Culver City Chamber of Commerce, the Culver City Exchange Club, the Culver City Education Foundation, the Culver City Police Chiefs Advisory Committee, and the 100 Black Men of Los Angeles. Thank you very much.
And I think that concludes our recognitions. Am I correct, city clerk? All right, thank you all. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? All right. We are a little behind schedule. We have already stated there is no report on action taken in closed session. We'll move on now to community announcements by members. Councilmember Viren.
Nothing for me, ma'am.
Councilmember Erickson.
I just wanted to say that thank you to staff who put together the Olympic ceremony, closing ceremony on the plaza yesterday. It was a fantastic event, so thank you.
Councilmember Puzza.
No, Mayor, thank you.
Vice Mayor O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to echo what Councilmember Erickson said, as well as the Parks and Recreation and Community Services Department put on a wonderful event for our seniors at the Senior Center for the opening ceremonies. That was the first time I attended a big Senior Center event, and I learned that all events are big there. It was incredibly well-attended, a lot of excitement, and I just think it's wonderful we have that space for them. So kudos to our PRCS department.
Thank you. I do have a couple of announcements. I feel like I've been talking on my apologies, but just really briefly, I'm very grateful to be back in these chambers after our little break. I had the pleasure of representing the city at the Fire Department's recertification, so just another acknowledgement to Chief Powell and the Fire Department on their sixth recertification. I'm really proud that our amazing Wendy Museum hosted an event, was that last weekend, centering Susan Burton and the fight for incarcerated women. So that was really the Wendy Museum, just plus one, check out what they're doing there. Their current exhibit is really wonderful. Want to acknowledge staff that continues to do a fantastic job on the Summer Concert Series. I think it'll be wrapping up soon, but if you haven't gotten an opportunity to hang out at the Culver City Steps on Thursday, it really is a joyous community celebration. So if you haven't already, please check it out. Plus one on the Olympics closing ceremony. It was really fantastic to share space with colleagues and community yesterday. And just as an update, I was able to attend an event at the White House, the Building Better Communities Gathering. We were able to interface with our Vice President and the Second Gentleman, as well as key deputies at the federal level to advocate on things on the local level. So that was really rewarding, so I'm very grateful for that. And I do just want to add a couple of additional things that I want to say, but I'll round out. Ultimately, my goal as mayor and councilmember is to further the idea that in a previous sundown town, that we can all feel seen and feel heard and feel true belonging. As neighbors, I deeply hope that we can extend respect and empathy toward one another. I say all the time that we belong to one another, and belonging requires transparency, honesty, respect, and accountability. And I respect everyone in this room, everybody who's watching at home, and everyone in our entire community, and I hope that my leadership shows that. Thank you for listening to my brief announcements. I tried to make them brief, but let's move forward with the meeting. Are there any additional updates from any commissions, boards, or committees, any information items from staff?
Just for item, it's an agenda item number 14 has been removed from the agenda and moved to a future agenda.
Okay. All right, it looks like we're moving on now to a presentation from Dr. Nicole Yates of Keen Independent Research regarding the Culver City Racial Equity Action Plan Project. Welcome, Dr. Yates.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers, City Manager, and City Attorney. In accordance with the city's goals of continued efforts to embed racial equity into its framework through policies, procedures, and structure, Keen Independent Research was awarded the contract to partner with the city to develop a Racial Equity Action Plan, heretofore referenced as the REAP. The purpose of the REAP is to meet the objective of applying a results-based accountability platform to facilitate the normalization of conversations around race, development of staff capacity through training, and to infuse racial equity into city operations by embedding this lens into routine internal and external community-based decision-making. In this regard, Keen Independent Research has completed more than 200 equity assignments that include recommendations for improving racial equity, both internally and externally, and staff is pleased that activities related to Phase One of the REAP timeline are currently in progress. Here tonight to present details regarding the REAP is Dr. Nicole Yates, who is a senior consultant with Keen Independent Research and has led a significant number of equity-related projects at the firm. She has more than a decade of experience working with historically marginalized populations in the Los Angeles area and in California. She earned her doctorate, her doctorate in Educational Psychology from USC, where she conducted research on diverse students' classroom engagement with the Los Angeles Unified School District. Before I turn it over to Dr. Yates for the presentation, please note that Dana Anderson and I are available to answer any questions you may have on this item. Thank you in advance for your time this evening.
All right. Hello, Mayor McMORAN, councilmembers. I'm very pleased to be with you all this evening. I've met a couple of you, and I'm happy to be here to meet the rest of you. And hello to everyone else in the chamber this evening. I'm Dr. Nicole Yates, and I am going to go through a presentation that'll give you a brief overview of what this plan is and where we are and where we're hoping to go, and then what we, what we're asking of council here. So, next slide, please. So I'll give you a brief introduction to Keen Independent. I'll keep it super brief because Michelle already did a great one. Can't really top that, so then I'll go into our overview of the project, where I'll talk a little bit about what it is that we're doing, give some examples from prior work, and then I'll talk about the current tasks and upcoming tasks for this project. Then we'll end with the city council's involvement, what we're envisioning for that. Next. All right, so our firm, Keen Independent Research, we are actually, in between when I put this presentation together and now, we hired a person. So we're now 26 people. And our staff are located all around the country. We have a couple of folks that are in Los Angeles County, and I am one of them. I'm in Glendale. We have a lot of experience with these, these kinds of studies, as Michelle mentioned, doing both internal and external assessments, and we do have extensive experience in California. We also often work with different kinds of frameworks when we are putting together diversity, equity, inclusion-related assessments, and one of the most popular frameworks that we use is GARE, the Government Alliance on Race, excuse me, Equity. And we, so we, they use a results-based accountability firm, so they, that means they kind of start with the outcome in mind and then work backwards to create goals and then specific actions to address those. Next slide. So what is this, the Racial Equity Action Plan? Again, a couple of you, I've talked to a little bit about this, but for the rest of you, it's a, the goal really, as Michelle mentioned, is to be able to integrate racial equity. equity into everything that the city does. So we're not trying to make extra work for the city, we're trying to ensure that this is efficient and that this is infused into the ethos of the city and what you all do. So the recommendations will be focused both internally, so things that can be done to more infuse racial equity into operations within Culver City as a workplace, but also Culver City as a place to live, work, and play. So we are gathering a lot of internal and external input for, to create this plan, so I'll talk a little bit about specifically what we're doing there. And then, once we've got the recommendations, we will be doing some sessions with staff that are focused on implementation and capacity building to ensure that the recommendations can be fully implemented. And then finally, we want to do this in a way that is inclusive and that is respectful of all people's opinions. As, you know, Mayor, I really appreciated your remarks on belonging and respect and inclusion, and that's really what we're trying to do here, is to create something that, you know, the whole community has participated in and can be proud of. Next. So this is a racial equity action plan, but we also think about racial equity in an intersectional way, so race and ethnicity, they intersect with many other facets of folks' identity to form, you need to inform folks' unique experiences. So we are foregrounding racial equity in this assessment, but we're also thinking about the ways in which it may intersect with physical ability, with sexual orientation, with other factors that inform folks' experiences. So you will see that that's kind of the approach that we will take in that final plan. Next, please. So the tasks, we've got this assessment broken down into two phases. The first phase is what we're calling the baseline assessment, and so that is the internal phase where we're looking at Culver City as a place of work. So we are reviewing policies, programs, procedures. These include things that have to do with hiring, with workplace conduct. These also include external policies, such as policing. And so we are looking at all of those holistically to get an idea of where the city is. So that also includes prior studies and any prior work that's been done in this area, which includes the historical context study. We're also reviewing the studies, sorry, the city's workforce, and in a quantitative way, looking at the city's workforce and comparing that to available workers in the area. We've kind of defined a labor market, and we're looking at any, looking for any potential disparities there in the current workforce, as well as in hiring, promotions, and separations. Then we are, we've had, we've been having conversations with staff, with, I've talked with some of you and Council, and we're developing some of these initial priorities, and then gathering some stakeholder feedback from employees of the city. So I'll talk a little bit more about where we are with those tasks towards the end. Next. Then the second phase will be the plan development and implementation. So in the second phase, we'll turn our attention more externally, and we will start to engage members of the public. So we've already, I'm working closely with Dana, Michelle, and Janine. We've already begun some conversations about having a public meeting that Keen Independent will host, where members of the public are all free to come and provide feedback. We're planning to attend some of the fall events here to get feedback that way, in sort of an intercept survey way, and then we'll have a planned community survey as well. So all of that information from that external feedback and then the internal feedback, we will develop into that Racial Equity Action Plan, and then, as I mentioned, provide implementation support. So with the help of the departments, so we have an internal REAP review committee that's been assembled, that has representation from all departments, and we're beginning to meet with that group now, so that we can lay the groundwork for implementation that will happen later. So the plan is to have the entire assessment finished in spring of 2025. Next, thank you. So a couple of examples, so again, all of these plans are very, very customized, so we don't have specific recommendations at this stage in the assessment here. But what I wanted to do was give some examples of some prior work, so that you have an idea of types of things to expect, just again, with the knowledge that this plan for Culver City will be highly customized. So for Orange County Transportation Authority, we also did some very extensive internal and external engagement with folks, and reviewed a lot of their internal programs and policies, and then as part of that, we also became very familiar with the state and federal legal requirements that affect a DEI program. Those are factors to consider, so we want to make sure we are doing things that are within the legal bounds of what those programs can look like. So that example there, that pie chart, is from the internal virtual workshop survey, which we use the term "virtual workshop" to refer to a sort of a longer-form survey that has a lot of questions that we would ask in a focus group, but allows folks to get to participate on their own time. So in this virtual workshop survey, we asked employees of OCTA how comfortable they would feel reporting an instance of discrimination. So as you can see, 80% of folks in that survey said yes, but when we dug down into the data and started to try and disaggregate by groups, we found that specifically folks that identified as Black or African-American, and folks that identified as LGBTQ+ were driving that no, so that 12% there, that was a no, we don't feel comfortable. Those folks were overrepresented in that group. Next, please. For Santa Clara County, Parks and Rec, kind of close to the Bay Area there, we also conducted some extensive engagement with the public. We had an external community advisory group that was extremely helpful in getting out the word on the external, that public survey. So we were able to work with the county's translation services to translate their survey into Spanish, which we do in-house, but Vietnamese, and simplified Chinese as well. Again, that advisory group, we contacted over 80 organizations in the area to invite them to participate, and many of those organizations represented folks that were historically underserved by the park system. And then we developed their recommendations based on that results-based accountability framework that GARE uses. And next. Then for City of Milwaukee, this is Milwaukee with an I-E, that is not a typo, and this is in Oregon, Milwaukee, Oregon. So Milwaukee, Oregon, our assignment there started with a literary review of the history of Milwaukee and Oregon, the racialized history of Milwaukee and Oregon. They hadn't done any sort of historical context study as this community has, so we did some of that preliminary research there to get an idea of what the, get an idea of the context of the community. We also did a workforce analysis for them that will be similar to what we will produce for Culver City, so you can see that result there, that table there to the right has some of those results for hires for City of Milwaukee. That 16-9 there that's in the little gray box indicates a substantial disparity for people of color. So they were not, based on the availability of workers for government jobs in the area, the City of Milwaukee was hiring fewer people of color than would be expected. And then we also, again, gathered input through employees, through residents, and were able to identify some short and long-term goals for them, and then help them with, help their staff with prioritization of those, so that they could start right away with maybe a few small wins, and then work up to some of those larger things that were more resource-intensive. Next. All right, so current and upcoming tasks. So we have completed some analyses of workforce, of hiring, separations, promotions, and the current workforce. Additionally, we have been reviewing, we've reviewed almost 5,000 pages of policy-procedure documents from the city, and we have a few more documents that we're going to be adding into that. We've also begun conversations with staff members, again, I mentioned that internal REAP review committee that will start meeting this week. They are also going to be champions of the internal, the internal virtual workshop that's been distributed to staff. So we launched that last week and have already around 30 responses to that, with a number of other responses that have been started. So that group will be instrumental in driving participation there. And then we also, again, have been discussing some of the community engagement, what that can look like, but we will have some interim findings more towards the beginning of fall that will look at the city internally. So we'll have that, results of the workforce analysis, and analysis of the policies, procedures, and programs, as well as some analysis of the findings from the internal virtual workshop. And, thank you. All right, so then the City Council, you as a council, so again, I've already spoken to you, Mayor McMoran, and to a couple other folks on the council, but we're really interested in getting your feedback at key junctures, so both in terms of what you want to see in this assessment, but also your feedback as a person who lives here, or works here, or plays here. So when we have that, that community virtual survey that will go out, we will definitely want you to participate in that with kind of your resident or worker hat on, and not necessarily your council hat, but interested in your direction. And then we will, when we have the final plan, we are also going to present the final plan to Council to get your input there as well, but there will be junctures, many junctures in which you can provide feedback that will be incorporated into the plan. And I think that is it. So I appreciate your time, and I will open it up for questions, if that is permissible. Yes, great, questions.
Councilmember Vier.
Thank you, Dr. Yates, for your presentation. Is it possible to share your slide deck with staff so they can send it to us? I'd like to have a hard copy of that, if possible.
Yes, absolutely, staff has the presentation, so I can make sure that that is sent to you.
All right, I appreciate it, thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Erickson.
Thank you for your presentation. I have no questions, other than Councilmember Vier ahead.
Thank you.
Councilmember Puzza.
Thanks for the presentation on the Equity Subcommittee, and I also attended a E-RAC Committee, so I've seen the presentation, so thank you very much, and thanks for the work that you're doing. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Thanks, thanks so much for your presentation, just looking forward to having that conversation, so feel free to reach out.
Thank you.
Thanks so much, Dr. Yates, and for our HR team that has been supportive, I hope, of you, and making sure that this gets done, so very happy to hear that. In terms of, I just have a couple of, a few things, and I think we might have talked about this in our Equity Subcommittee meeting, but just a big emphasis of going where folks are. So PTA, back to schools around the corner, chamber events, religious spaces, Senior Center, just where people already are hanging out and fellowshipping, it's great to just, you know, rather than designating a space and a time that, like here, where it's full today, but it's not normally this way, and so, you know, we want to make sure that as many folks from as many different walks of life have an opportunity to participate, so just a plus one on that. I'm curious, as the advisory group makeup, or how folks were selected for that?
For the internal committee?
Oh, it looks like.
Dana has an input on that.
Good evening, Mayor, members of councils. Dana Anderson, Human Resources Director. So the internal representatives for each department was selected by department leadership, but a lot of them were volunteers. It was opened up for those of interest, and for most departments, we had multiple volunteers, so we have backups as well. So the opportunity was extended to those, but we do have a representative from each department.
Thank you. Are folks being compensated for this extra work?
It's during normal work hours, so yes.
Okay, okay, sounds good. I wanted to follow up on, I think you said the 12% didn't feel comfortable sharing, did I hear that correctly?
Yes, that was for OCTA.
Got it, so, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I just used acronyms, and I was like, no, I should say the full thing, Orange County Transportation, it's Orange County Transportation Authority, Transit Authority.
Got it, got it. I know, acronyms are super, no worries, safe space.
They really are.
So do we have clarity on, like, building out what the conditions are needed to make that 12% feel safer, or to, you know, to tangibly build out the conditions and the environment to sort of, you know, transform that? I know for some people, 12% doesn't seem like a large enough number to really shift rules or policy or procedure, but I think that that is a critical mass of folks. So do you have any learnings that you could share for us that might be instructive as we go into this process?
Yes, absolutely. So part of the beauty of the virtual workshop format is that we are asking some of these rating questions, or these kind of agree/disagree questions, but the focus is really on the why and the how. So we ask that question, but then we also ask folks to explain why you don't feel comfortable reporting any instance of discrimination or harassment to your HR department. So this is a very similar format to the virtual workshop that the city staff members have been, have seen, and can participate in now, that's currently open. So what we did when we saw that in OCTA, we looked at that, found that percentage, you know, drilled down a little bit, saw that, that the, but what was driving that 12% was mostly, you know, folks that identified as African-American, or Black, or LGBTQ+, and then we went and looked specifically for, for folks who identified that way, looked for specific quotes in their written answers to see what it was that was, what it was that was, was driving that discomfort. And so then, I think in that study, then, we had also some listening sessions with staff, and so we did some listening sessions that were segmented by folks' identities, so that they could feel like they had a safe space to come and talk about these kinds of issues. So then we were able to ask some more informed questions based on what we found in that virtual workshop. So we can expect something similar for the city here, if there are some very clear, clear points of divergence between demographic subgroups, then we will definitely explore those in greater depth.
Thank you for that. So ultimately, what I'm looking for are like some key practical steps that will allow for us to really make some strides, to ensure that everyone in our community feels, you know, belonging, it's something I talk about a lot. I feel like I shared this with you and our Equity Subcommittee, but just for the public, often, or sometimes, when someone shares, you know, a different point of view than maybe a majority of the community, it can be kind of placed to the side or overstepped because it is not what the majority of our neighbors are experiencing, and I think it's really important that we start to build out a culture where we are hearing and validating and seeing people's lived experience, and holding space for that, that two things can be true at the same time, and continuing to journey on. that two things can be true at the same time, and continuing to journey on in community, in being neighbors, in working, learning, playing, all of that that happens in Culver City that we, you know, love and enjoy. So I'm really grateful that you're doing this work. I look forward to the next steps. I feel like spring 2025 is like tomorrow, girlfriend, so I'm wishing you and your team.
It's gonna come up fast.
Yeah, a lot of luck, and if I can be supportive, or, you know, whatever you need. We want this to be a success for our community, and, and thank you for raising your hand and, and doing this critical work.
Absolutely. Thank you so much, Mayor, council, and everyone in attendance. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Okay, we are moving on now to joint public comment. For items not on the agenda.
Mayor, I just want to inform the public that as we reach our capacity in the council chambers, that any member who has signed up to speak tonight can still participate virtually by logging in online. Also, before we begin calling speakers, I will read a brief statement regarding hate speech. Members of the public have a right to speak on matters that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. However, this council strongly denounces hate speech and does not tolerate disruptive behavior in our meetings. Culver City prides itself on its diverse community and inclusion of all persons. We are committed to creating a safe space in the city and in these chambers where members of our community feel included and respected. Also, as a friendly reminder, if you have ceded time to someone, only one person may cede one minute to a person per agenda item. So if there are any duplicates, just know that you'll only receive one extra minute for those who have time ceded to them. We'll now begin calling folks up. We'll call 10 people at a time to allow folks to prepare.
And the list is as follows. Hala Khan, Maria Beg, Huang Neem Albek, Noel Brahm, Lisa Schultz, Nicholas Connor, Fawaz Itzwani, Patrick Godinez, Emily DeBini, and Thea Krizmani. And the next speaker is Hala Khan.
Respected councilmembers, thank you for giving us space to speak to the community's concerns. My name is Hala. I have two kids in the Culver City Public Schools. My family's been a resident of Culver City for over two decades. The things I'm seeing in my kids' lives and the things they have to listen in the schools from other kids that are dear friends, that are Jewish, it hurts them, it hurts me because we're all human and we should not feel that we have to take sides, to speak, to save other, other sides' lives. And I, I really hope that as a council, we can see that instead of being divisive, we're trying to unite when we call for peace, when we call for ceasefire, because that's what we are modeling for our kids, that's what we are modeling for our community, because kids listen, and what we model as adults impacts them, and especially if you're a minority. And we are trying to be inclusive and create a culture of belonging. I think everyone's voice matters. We might differ in our political opinions, but see, calling for peace, for ceasefire should never be controversial. And I thank you for this space because I know how the community is hurting, and they really would like this council to take a stand. Thank you.
Maria Beg.
Hi, my name is Maria, and I'm a Culver City resident and a mother of two, and I'm here today in support of an immediate and permanent ceasefire resolution. I'm asking this council to join 172 other city councils across the United States, like Santa Monica, that have called for a ceasefire. For the past 311 days, Israel has been committing genocide against the Palestinian people in Gaza with immunity. This genocide aided by the United States must come to an end. Palestinians in Gaza have faced catastrophic damage and indiscriminate bombing. Over 40,000 children, women, and men have been killed since Israel, have been killed by Israel since October 7th, and that number is drastically underestimated. Palestinians in Gaza no longer have access to clean water or medical treatment. Students have been out of school and without access to education for over a year. The Palestinians in Gaza are forced to flee their homes and have been displaced time and time again. They are being starved and ravaged by disease. Every 10 minutes, a child in Gaza dies. Think about that in terms of how long we have been in this meeting so far. At least 24% of those killed have been the youth. On August 10th, just a few days ago, Israel bombed a school, killing over 100 children, women, and men. Not a single body was found in one piece. The deaths and destruction the Palestinian people have faced is hurting the people of Culver City. The Palestinians in Culver City are hurting. The Muslims in Culver City are hurting. Your neighbors in Culver City are hurting. I am hurting. The steps you take today can impact our government on a national level.
Huang Neem Albek.
Dear Mayor McMoran and City Council members, I'm a physician and a mother and a resident of Culver City. I've come to you before in defense and the health of children when it came to gun violence prevention. At that time, you understood gun violence or community to be an epidemic, and you rallied with the community to prevent the death of even one child in our school district. So members of our community are now grieving about child deaths due to the current war in Gaza. We watch in horror as 38 children were killed on October 7th, and now 320 days later, the war has caused the death of 15,000 children. This equates to six children killed every hour. Of the surviving children, the humidity is overwhelming. The Academy, American Academy of Pediatrics reports the effect of war on children. An infant body, one-fifth the size of an adult, cannot sustain the stressors of war. The lack of water, malnutrition, injury from bodily harm, blood loss, poor sanitation, disease epidemic, and psychological stress is catastrophic for a child, let alone a compromised child. And now a medical, new medical term I've emailed you before has emerged called WCNSF, wounded child, no surviving family. The degree to which health and human rights have been violated in the war are inextricably linked to the death of thousands. We cannot be expected to normalize the death of children. The Say This Children founder spoke a century ago. All wars waged, whether just or unjust, disastrous or victorious, are wars against children. I urge you to agendize a ceasefire resolution in Gaza so that no further children are harmed or killed, and we as a community can begin to talk to each other and heal. May we support each other and come together like we can with solutions for humanitarian aid. And I'm just going to read names of four children, Noor, Ekram, Hamad, and Hagame, which have been killed. Thank you.
Lisa Schultz with one minute seated.
My name is Lisa Schultz. As you know, I'm a longtime business owner in Culver City, and for the past 10 years, I've been working in Gaza. I thought a lot about what I should share tonight. Should I talk about my friend Ghosn Ramzi Baroud, who's one of the leading intellectuals in Gaza, who lost over a dozen family members in three family homes in the first two weeks of Operation Swords of Iron? Should I talk about Mohammed Musa of the Gaza Poets Society, which we helped to found, who lost his home and his entire immediate family? Or about the arts movement in Gaza, which is one of the most powerful in the world and includes artists like Sohel Salam, who's lost his home twice in Israel's assaults on Gaza? When he submitted this piece in 2015 for a traveling exhibit that we did, it brought something home to me that as parents, we share simple moments like hanging our child's backpacks up by this door before school starts. But that's not going to be happening anytime soon in Gaza because there are few doors left, and there are even fewer schools. Every university has been destroyed, and Israel has been systematically bombing schools where families are sheltering. I could go on and on about the remarkable people in Gaza, but I want to just point out, when tax dollars of every resident in Culver City are being diverted from healthcare and housing to drop US-made bombs on children in Gaza, it is no longer just an international issue. My daughter Willow is here. She's an attendee at Culver High School, and I think often about the world that I'll bequeath her. When international law is disregarded and we shrug while tens of thousands of children are blown to bits, we tell our children that we don't care about the world, we bequeath them. That we're okay with normalizing horrific violence that will only spread just as gun violence spread when we didn't stop it after the first school shooting. For 300 days, I've watched parents digging their children from rubble. And I'm asking you to put a ceasefire on the agenda to help ensure this doesn't happen again, because never again means never again for anyone. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Noel Brahm.
Hello, Mayor, City Council. I do not mean to be insensitive by bringing up my film festival today, so any grace that can be extended, God bless you all, and thank you. My name is Noel Brahm, as I've stated. I run the Me Show Film Festival. Oscar Me Show was an independent filmmaker who from the 1920s to the 1940s wrote, directed, produced, and distributed over 44 feature films, and he did it independently. Me Show's goal was to bring together polarizing worlds that otherwise would never intersect, black, white, rich, poor, rural, and urban, et cetera. So we created the festival six years ago with the goal and aim of providing a platform to both multicultural and also BIPOC storytellers of all backgrounds, all walks of life, ultimately with the goal of creating understanding harmony by way of the arts. And my request today is to be agendized so that we can seek marketing city sponsorship from you all. Currently, we are being supported by the Second District through their discretionary fund and supervisor Holly J. Mitchell, and I'm coming before you guys today to seek and be agendized for marketing sponsorship.
Is the event in Culver City?
It is. It's going to take place at the Culver City Theater on October 21st to October 27th.
And what's it called again, I'm sorry?
The Me Show Film Festival.
Thank you so much.
Right, thank you. Thank you all.
And our next speaker is Fawaz Itzwani with one minute seated.
Hello, councilman. My name is Fawaz Itzwani. I'm a business owner and also a resident of Culver City for over 25 years. Today, we are gathered here to speak on behalf of innocent men, women, and children that are being slaughtered by senseless war that is, that is inching toward disaster. The echoing cries of children is haunting us, all of us. We could ignore this situation, or we could do something about it right here and right now. We are not here to take sides or divide the city, rather, counter-ization that this war is going nowhere. And there's no ending in sight. This is why today we come before you, councilmembers, to help our voice, peaceful humanitarian movement, calling for the ceasefire and for immediate return of all hostages, including the 10,000 innocent Palestinians who've been held indefinitely without due process. Some of those, 79 women, 250 minus 13, less than 13 years old, according to the anal matar, the senior lecturer of Tel Aviv. We are seeing civilians being tortured, where soldiers are sodomizing. Detainees, where soldiers are squarely targeting exclusively children, as stated on CBS by Jewish doctor Mark Permuter after coming back from the humanitarian mission from Gaza. If what you stated is true, back in October of '23, that Culver City expresses desire to see peace in the region, that will bring an endless, senseless cycle of violence, then you must ask what's his fire. This is obviously not going anywhere. It's destroying our families back home. It's, it's tearing everybody apart. It's not going anywhere. It's been 300 days. Putting end to it. Thank you.
Patrick Godinez.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers and staff. You all have been doing a great job of providing housing, you know, for the unhoused neighbors. It seems like the next challenge is going to be working with the, with the mental health and substance use disorder unhoused neighbors. So I'm asking the council to agendize, bringing in and discussing with USC's Street Medicine psychiatric team to work directly with the Department, Ergo Malgami, and the rest of the providers, you know, to assure the safety of the population that will be serving in the future, and also, you know, possibly bring, discussing the grants that might be available for the studies, you know, such as Johnson, Johnson to relieve some of the tax, tax money that are paying for these services. And also would like to agendize, you know, possibly bringing in the DOJ Cures Program to make sure that these, these clients are well taken care of, and for any kind of drug interaction, and also for any type of, you know, diversion that might occur. Thank you.
Next speaker, Emily DeBini with one minute seated.
Hi, I'm a resident here for 25 years. I am a Palestinian Christian. My husband is Latin Jewish, and I have relative sheltering in the churches of Gaza. Did you know there were churches in Gaza? Probably not. I volunteered, canvassed, donated, and voted for some of you. Mr. O'Brien, you decorated my son with many patches during his Cub Scout years. You made him so proud. Our kids went to some elementary school, the same elementary school, and volunteered with Beverly on Halloween carnival nights. Do you remember how many nights we sat there, late nights, counting thousands of dollars we made for PTA? Currently, I currently serve with Beverly at the LCAP Committee for CCUSD. I was, I also volunteer for the Houseless Committee for our city with Mr., oh, he left already, but anyways, I'm on my second year serving our city on the Houseless Committee. I, I served on the Booster Club president for several years. I've always donated for our schools, churches, CCEF, sports team, backpacks program, closet program, coached soccer, team mom, ran snacks at high school, school team. Does any of these acts seem to you? Does any of these acts seem to you as a behavior of an extremist or a terrorist or as a community member? Do I seem to you as a terrorist? I am Palestinian, but many of the community members here look at me when I wear this as a terrorist. I have lost family members when Israel bombed the church in Gaza. 29 people died, including a baby. This is their photo. Just, I only have two hands. I can't carry the photos of all of them. I can't show you how many of them died. This is one of my mom's cousin, Abu Isa. Abu Isa. Abu means the father. Isa means Jesus, Jesus in Arabic. Look, he's wearing a kufiya, kufiya.
Thea is not in the chambers nor on WebEx. We'll go on to the next speaker. City clerk, maybe we can come back to them. In the meantime, we'll call the next speaker.
I do want to briefly remind the public, if we are at capacity right now, speakers can still join virtually. So we will call the names, so that'll give people enough time to join the meeting virtually to participate.
Let's go on to the next person. And the next listed are Kelly Kent, Leah Pressman, and Kiran Randhawa. We're attempting to unmute her right now.
I am Dr. Kelly Kent. I'm president of the CCUSD Board of Education, and I'm here speaking on behalf of myself tonight. In my capacity as a school board member, I have had the opportunity to hear from much of our community on both calls for a ceasefire and calls for release of the hostages. And I want you to know that there are many, many voices calling for both of those, and in particular, calling for a position that honors the current and historical experience of Palestine and Gaza. I too have heard from many of the people who are contacting you regarding you only taking a stance staunchly supporting the Israeli government or only calling for the release of the hostages. And I think because of their positionality, because of the way they use their voice, the way they use their privilege, and the way that they wield power, you might misunderstand and think that there are more of those voices than the voices of those who are asking us to also consider the Palestinians. And I want to let you know it isn't the case. There are many in our community who would like to hear you speak and honor Palestinians and call for a ceasefire in addition to the release of the hostages. The people that I have seen and heard from who want this from you and us are tapping into all their courage right now to be with you tonight to make these requests. I've seen them be very intimidated in the face of people who consider themselves the opponents of those supporting Palestine, and yet they come holding their children and shaking and opening their heart to you and asking you to consider a more holistic position on this crisis. Please know that the people you are hearing from supporting Gazans only represent some of the many. I hope you will heed their call to agendize a conversation that is more holistic tonight. Thank you.
You're unmuted. Go ahead.
Tonight, to listen to the moving testimony coming from our community and pass a resolution for ceasefire in Gaza. Calling for ceasefire in Gaza has been the official position of California, the California Democratic Party since ceasefire resolutions were passed unanimously by the county party in March and overwhelmingly by the state party in May of this year. Opposing a resolution for ceasefire in Gaza is now pretty much a fringe position among those who call themselves Democrats, claim to uphold democratic values, or who prize party unity. The state resolution would serve as an excellent model for a resolution we could be proud to pass in Culver City. The final adopted State Democratic Party resolution stresses the importance of international law, calls for a mutual permanent ceasefire, immediate release of hostages, protection of civilians in Gaza and Israel, delivery of adequate lifesaving humanitarian aid, and a pathway for Israel and Palestine towards a mutually negotiated durable peace. Our city and our Assembly District had a hand in shaping these resolutions. Andrew Lackner and I both elected representatives to the Democratic Party from Culver City, who are Jewish, were involved in getting these resolutions drafted and passed. Jimmy Woods Gray, elected to serve on the Central Committee from our own 55th Assembly District, was one of the authors of the county resolution, was then used to craft the state resolution. Council members Erickson and Farah, you are both Democrats. For you to refuse to put a ceasefire resolution on the agenda would be to radically depart from the expressed values and position of the party. So much for party unity. You can read the details.
Kiran, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for your time. I am a community member, a mother, and a nurse. As a nurse, it is my duty to care for all patients with equality regardless of religion, ethnicity, socioeconomic status. And as Council members, it is your duty to ensure the safety of all your community members. When our national government is not calling for the end of the mass murder of thousands of Palestinian lives using our tax dollars, we have our local community to turn to. We have you to turn to for our safety. All humanitarian aid has been blocked by Israel. By calling for a ceasefire, we are saying to stop the indiscriminate killing of innocent life. We are standing with humanity and showing the city, the state, and the nation that we will take a stand for humanity, whether in Culver City or in Palestine. As a nurse, I have, I've always said that we have to care for all patients, whether it's in Culver City or Palestine, with equality. And in your office, you are sitting there, it is your duty to ensure the safety. Every day, I am faced with Islamophobic hate within the community as across from my mosque there is a huge sign that says free hostages. Let's be clear, there are thousands of Palestinian hostages. Every day, children are being murdered. I have young children. What are we showing my children that we don't care about life in general? Please, please, call for ceasefire.
And our next speaker is Pithango Trattush with one minute seated.
Your Honor, City Council. I'm a designer in gratitude market, and I born, I'm Jewish and I born in Israel. And I was in the IDF soldier in 1989, which was the beginning of the Intifada, the Palestinian Revolution, resistance and liberation from the Israel occupation. The reason why I'm here is because I wanted you guys to know that it's an ongoing situation. It didn't just start on the 7th of October, and we didn't do much since then, so maybe it's time for some movement, some action from you guys. And the violent that I witnessed as a soldier in Gaza is violent that none of us will be okay if we would just know the truth. Truth is, it's the most important thing in this subject, and it's time for us to open our eyes because when our eyes are closed, eventually the truth will just float and will touch all of us in a way that we better not face that. So I'm just calling for you guys to open your eyes and to realize that ceasefire right now is not only for us, it's for the future of our kids. You know, to see you guys making major decisions that impact the future of our kids and you being part of this evolution is so important, you know, for all of us to witness that you guys actually doing your job because your job is to help us, you know? Your job is to guide us. How can you guide us if you close your eyes?
And our next speakers are Matilda Engel, Bine Nidfru, Gary Sees, Majed Dakak, and
Council, I had seceded my time to another speaker, so I think it was incorrect.
I'm not seeing that user on WebEx right now. I do want to provide a friendly reminder, if you are calling in, try to change your name so that we can see your name on the list or send a chat message and we can see it as well. So let's proceed.
And let's try to, if we can, do a list of 10, and if folks can queue, that'd be great, because we do want to hear from everyone. And if someone is not ready, we'll just make sure that they'll be accounted for. Just want to make sure that folks are able to be heard.
And the next order is follows: Gary Sees, Majed Dakak, Alex Dakal, Ronald Ostrin, Al B., Marcy Vaughn, Polly Stanberg.
Mayor, City Council. On June 14th, 2023, Mayor McMorn and Councilmember Puza launched a community initiative named Culver City for All. The stated goal was to imagine a Culver City where everyone belongs and can thrive. Although many of us disagree with the specific policies supported under this banner, I believe that the great majority of us think that this is a cooperation and respect of our community is one of our core values. This is why I'm standing here today to urge the city not to consider a resolution regarding Gaza, whether supported by pro-Palestinian or pro-Israeli factions. Let me explain why. Culver City has both established Jewish and established Muslim communities. We are home to both Temple Akiva and King Fahad Mosque, and their communities are important parts of our city. They're our neighbors, our friends, our shopkeepers, and the members likely have family and friends on either side of the crisis. It would be simply wrong for the City Council to pick one side over the other. These neighbors and friends, as well as many others, may have starkly different perspectives on this matter, and certainly they're entitled to those perspectives. I am not standing here to support one side or the other. Instead, I am here to support and celebrate our community and our diversity. Centering and lifting the values of respect and cooperation must be the City Council's primary concern, not picking sides in a conflict that has no agency over. After the dust settles, we must all continue to live together in Culver City in peace and preserve Culver City for all. Resolution on this matter is by its nature divisive. It's just, all it's going to do, the loser is going to feel unwelcome here, the winner, I don't know, but the loser is going to feel like Culver City is not for them. Therefore, I urge you...
Mr. Zeiss, your time has expired.
Thank you, Council members, for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Majed Dakak. I'm a officer of the Arab American Lawyers Association of Southern California. Many of our members are citizens here of this city. I'm here today to talk about the truth, the same truth that people with much larger shoes than me tried to also evoke through their messages. Martin Luther King, Gandhi, Caesar Chavez, the list goes on and on. The reason my theme is the truth is because you, Council members, all must live with your own truth in what you do and how you vote, in the communication you give to the community at large that you serve. When a citizen of this community reached out to a Council member here about the ceasefire resolution, the response to that wasn't an email. And the response was, Culver City, I'm coding the email, I can show it to the Council members if they like to see it, the community can also see it. The response was, Culver City has no bearing on international matters. The problem with that is that contradicts the truth. This same council passed a resolution a year ago in October.
Mr. Dakak, your time has expired. Our next speaker, Alex Dakal.
Hi, I'm Alex Dakal, a member of this community. So to the continuation of that, you guys voted against a resolution of supporting October 7th and supporting the state of Israel, which contradicts your previous statement of not engaging in any international policy. So there's a contradiction there that's funded by our local tax dollars, and I feel like equal taxes should have equal representation, so you guys should also have a statement, you know, asking for an immediate ceasefire because every life that's being lost is paid and funded by each and every one of your tax dollars.
Next, we have Ron Ostrin with one minute seated.
Ron, can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Great.
Great. Thank you. This is a tough thing, because it's our responsibility as Culver citizens to see our mutual humanity. And I think where we part is that you cannot negotiate peace with someone who's come to kill you, because I've not heard one speaker condemn Hamas. And that is the problem. Hamas is the one that uses innocent civilians to, basically, as their shields. And for the public here, not to condemn Hamas and its murder of 1,200 innocent individuals, which is the equivalent, if that happened to us on 9/11, over 35,000 people would have been killed. That's the proportion of the population of Israel that was killed. As Martin Luther King said, "There comes a time when silence is betrayal." I want peace. I want a ceasefire. I want it to stop, but it won't stop until you recognize the horrible tragedy that was created knowingly by Sinwar, and I have not heard one word of condemnation. This is not the city of Culver City's responsibility. They have too much work to do. Look at all the time that has been used. The way to solve and get to peace is for human beings to try to understand each other. The tragedy in Gaza is a tragedy that was initiated by Hamas, but I hear no condemnation of Hamas from all the speakers in favor of the ceasefire. It's a blind spot. It's normalizing horrific violence. Does Hamas reflect democratic values? They actually have plans, if they are successful, in destroying Israel and figure out who they're going to kill, who they're going to deport, and maybe save a few scientists to prevent a brain drain. Let's find peace by looking at each other's humanity. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Al B.
Good evening, Councilmembers. I'm a Zionist, and I'm not just a Zionist, I'm a proud Zionist, because I believe that Jews have a right to live in their own homeland. What all these racist pro-Hamas anti-Semites want is to murder all the Jews under the disguise of a ceasefire resolution. Now, I want to make it clear, I don't oppose a ceasefire per se, as long as it's got the condition of releasing all the hostages and for Hamas to disarm, because what Hamas wants to do is commit a second Holocaust. They go on all over all Jazirah and say it. This is not me exaggerating, okay? So, and so we got to see what those racist pro-Hamas anti-Semites really want. Here is a picture from Washington DC a month ago, where they say that they want to implement the final solution, Hitler's final solution, and they want to burn the American flag and burn America with it, right there. And then, they want to bring Hamas here. They said Hamas is coming, long live the resistance. And just to make sure that we understand what that means, resistance is Hamas's middle name. Hamas stands for Islamic Resistance Movement in Arabic, it's the acronym. And this is not new. This didn't start on October 7th. Here's a photo from 1941, in which the Palestinian Mufti of Jerusalem, Amin al-Husseini, met with Hitler to see how they can join forces to murder all the Jews. Don't be too impressed by the fact that there are Jews for Hamas in this room. Back in the 1930s, there were Jews for Hitler, and Hitler murdered them too. So yes, Hamas will murder those Jews. Just because they're pro-Hamas does not mean that they'll be saved. Pass a resolution supporting Israel's right to defend itself. Only pro-Hamas anti-Semites would oppose such a resolution.
Mayor and City Councilmembers, I know that this is going to be a very long night for you. I'm sorry about that, there's nothing I can do about it. What I do want to say is that I don't really feel like this is a place for, we're a small town in Southern California with 40,000 people. This is something that's a national decision to make. It is nothing that we can do. What, there have been 140 cities that have already passed resolutions? What has that done? Nothing. I don't think that us passing a resolution is going to do anything. And I also don't feel like it's right for a bunch of people to come in and try to push their decision onto our small city. And I agree with Gary that there are two sides in this city, not two sides, but there are two very large groups in this city, and any decision that you make is going to make the other one feel like they are not wanted here, and that is not true. We are a very diverse city, and we always have been for a very long time. And we've always, well, for as long as I've lived here, which is over 20 years, we've always been welcoming to everybody who comes. So I urge you not to pass this, anything about it. Leave it to national. Thank you.
Polly is not in the chambers nor on WebEx. Polly, you've been located and unmuted. Polly is on WebEx, go ahead.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Culver City Council. My name is Polly Stenberg. I am a forever resident of Culver City. No matter where I travel or for how long, I am rooted in the formative years I spent living and working here, and the home I know I will always have here. I moved to Culver in 2003 after my freshman year at USC. I was looking for a small neighborhood feeling away from the bustle of campus life. I moved into an apartment on Benson Avenue between Venice and Washington. As a 19-year-old college student, I wandered down the street into S&amp;W Country Diner, where I was hired on the spot for my handshake. From that day, the diner became my family and Culver became my home. In some ways, Culver City and I grew together from a little town with a few restaurants to the bustling hub it is now. I am a proud Jewish mother of two. Both of my children were born Culver City residents in that little apartment on Benson. And my daughter, Sienna, named for her grandmother born in Palestine, is here with me tonight, proudly representing the Jewish youth calling for a ceasefire. I worked the nine months of both my pregnancies in Culver City, waddling around S&amp;W, nurtured by the love of many years' regular customers who watched me grow up. My heart beats so full for Culver City. My same heart aches so heavily for my Palestinian brothers and sisters, who are daily trying to survive a brutal genocide funded by our tax dollars. My heart aches for the pregnant women and small children, the sick and the elderly who no longer have access to a hospital system to receive the care they so desperately need. My heart beats for all of us, steadfast in our commitment to bringing an end to this inexcusable and indiscriminate military bombardment, which makes literally no one safer.
Ms. Stenberg, your time has expired. Next, we have Ronald Davis, Ivanska Pagan, Allison Furuto, Jeffrey Cooper, and Joan Sackler.
I'm Ronald Davis, a resident of Culver City since the early 1970s. I speak tonight doubtful that your hearts and minds are open to a plea to stop the killing of children in Palestine, because I know that you are aware of the blood that has been shed. There's not much I can say that will convince you about the horror of all of that. You know it. And I know you are not confused. When one of your constituents proclaims that the killing of the children of Gaza, the mutilation of the children of Gaza, the horror and pain of incessant bombing on the children of Gaza is justified, and I quote, "as mere collateral damage, as the costs of war," I know that you are as horrified as I am, but I suspect you won't act. I suspect you won't act because you're more concerned about not being divisive, about not standing against horror. I would say to you, that had the City Council of Berlin in 1938 proclaimed that what Germany was doing to the Jews, you would not have stayed silent. You are silent today.
And our next speaker is Ivanska Pagan, followed by Allison Furuto, Jeffrey Cooper, and Joan Sackler.
Respectant mayor and council, my name is Ivanska Pagan, and I'm here supporting the businesses in Culver City, specifically the food. I'm here supporting the Palestinians for the ceasefire, and I just can't comprehend how we live in a world that we are okay, our families are okay, our families have dreams, but yet, we destroy other lives. And I cannot comprehend how this can go on. One week was enough, and me, as a former US Army soldier, I cannot believe we're just killing for killing, because this is just killing for killing, and they deserve life. All the Palestinians deserve life. I follow these kids, kids out there, Yusef. There's so many kids, actually, that they're like everybody else. All the kids are kids. They want to play, they want a future, but we have taken that away. And I just can't understand how we are going to continue doing this. And again, I love Culver City, even though I'm not here in Culver City living. Thank you.
Allison, or Furuto, Jeffrey Cooper, and Joan Sackler. One moment, we're waiting for Allison Furuto. Allison is not on WebEx nor in the chamber, so we'll move on to Jeffrey Cooper.
Since I have 30 seconds more than I thought I would have, I just want to say that I'm Jewish. I lived for four years working with Palestinians in the 19, early 1990s, in the Gaza Strip and in the West Bank, and those were powerful years in my life. And I've just got a very brief prepared statement. I'm a member of Justice for Palestine LA. We're here today asking the Culver City Council to pass a resolution that calls for an immediate ceasefire and a permanent peace in Gaza. Palestinians and Jews have been dying and will continue to die if this war continues. Every human life is precious. We're also asking that your resolution call for the mutual exchange of hostages, the reinstatement of US funding for the UN Relief and Works Agency, and an end to the US sending arms and military equipment to Israel, primarily because these actions violate both US and international laws. Our coalition has been opposing any discrimination, any discriminatory beliefs and actions, especially antisemitism and racism anywhere in the world. Our government's inaction to stop all this killing is helping set the stage in Gaza for a polio epidemic, which may not know borders and may cross from Gaza into Israel, massive deaths by starvation, and what I really worry about, a much wider and more destructive war, not only in the Middle East, but possibly in the whole world. And once it happens, we can't say, oh, it's too late.
Our next speaker is Joan Sackler with 1 minute seated.
Okay. Let me just get this out of the way. Great. My name is Joan Sackler, and I'm one of hundreds and hundreds of people living in Santa Monica who spent months encouraging our City Council to pass a resolution calling for a ceasefire in Gaza. And sure enough, on May 15th, on a vote of 6 to 1, they passed a resolution which called for, 1, the ceasefire immediately, 2, immediate humanitarian aid, including water, food, shelter, clothing, 3, release of all the hostages, 4, due process for prisoner release. The resolution also condemned antisemitism, anti-Arab racism, Islamophobia, and all forms of hate and incitement to violence. Interestingly enough, Culver City is an international city, because it is a sister city to sisters and cities in Japan, Mexico, South Korea, and Canada, where international friendship is fostered. So passing this resolution, for you, members of the City Council in Culver City, passing this resolution isn't keeping with international understanding and peace. There are over 100 City Councils in the country that have already passed similar resolutions. So what I ask you is, do the right thing. Pass a resolution.
And our next speakers are Connor Prophet, Stephen Jones, Ryan Williany, Camila Huntley, Daniel Nikfarjum, Sana Manay, and Samantha Mohammed.
Good evening, Culver City Council. My name is Connor Prophet. I am here, along with people in their tens and in their hundreds, to call for a permanent ceasefire and a release of all hostages and unjustly held prisoners. I have organized, over the past six weeks, in secret, because I have felt threatened in this community, and I've just had my identity posted online as soon as I gave my name out as one of the organizers of this place, and then posted in some secret Facebook group. So I think the point of this is to show that Culver City has a diverse community, that it is represented not only by people on this side, but also on this side. And what that means is that we should be free to express our opinion peacefully and without fear of reprisal, and that's why we're here tonight. You know, I've heard a few people get up here and talk about this side or that side, winning or losing. And with respect to those speakers, I don't think this is a winning or losing. I think that peace is a win for everybody. And I think that's how we have to look at this. A durable, permanent ceasefire with release of hostages and unjustly held political prisoners is a win for everyone, so I think what we need is... So I think what we need is dialogue with our neighbors, like Mr. Zeiss that just spoke. I would love to have a conversation with him. I would love to have a conversation with anyone that is free and open, where people feel unthreatened and free to express their valid opinions. And I think dialogue is the key, not only within our community, but within our country and in our world. And the Culver City Council is the voice for this community. So when people say things like, what is a Culver City Council resolution going to do? What are the other Culver City, what are the other city council resolutions going to do? Any change that happens in this country is from the bottom on up, and that's why we have to start here. Now, I've been reading, I've been reading my Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and not just for a cheap quote lately. The civil rights movement started from the bottom on up. It started with small actions like this in the aggregate that pile up to finally make our government respond. I don't have Vice President Harris's phone number, but I do have some of yours, and I'm so appreciative of your dialogue. And I'm just asking that you represent us and call for a permanent ceasefire. Thank you.
Next, we have Stephen Jones. Mr. Jones, you're unmuted.
Thank you. I'm a Culver City resident, and I'm asking you to please agendize and vote yes on a resolution calling for a durable ceasefire in Gaza and the release of all hostages. For all our differences of background and opinion in Culver City, I know we all have the same humanity, and we place the same value on human life. I'm speaking today to appeal to these shared values. Last year, the Culver City Council rightly condemned the violence of October 7th in a unanimous resolution. A local resident who spoke passionately in favor of that resolution called on the city council to quote, "rise above politics and ideology and to stand with the Israeli people and the innocent victims who are suffering in Gaza today." You're now hearing the very same call from Culver City residents who are asking for a ceasefire and the return of all hostages. It's been heartbreaking to think of what it would be like if my kids and I were living in Gaza right now. I've seen the images and heard the stories from survivors who've lost their loved ones. My six-year-old has seen signs around town, and so we've had to discuss the hostages and the continued violence in Gaza. For him, it's beyond comprehension. Why can't we come together to stop the violence? The bombs may be dropping on the other side of the world, but this is still an issue that affects us deeply in Culver City. Please agendize and support a resolution that calls for a durable ceasefire and the release of all hostages. Thank you.
Next, we have Ryan Willianni with one minute seated.
Hello, my name is Ryan Willianni, and I'm here to ask for a ceasefire resolution to be agendized. I have been in Culver City schools since El Marino, and I recently graduated from CCHS last fall. As a student and a young adult, I greatly resonate with the population of Gaza with about half being under 18. Throughout this conflict, all schools and universities have been completely demolished, and the academic year last year was terminated. For a city who put a tremendous amount of procedures in place to protect its youth from violence, I find your silence on the students of Gaza hypocritical. This school year, sorry, throughout my educational journey in Culver City schools, I have been proud to be part of a city that takes brave first steps to protect its students and community, which would be controversial nationwide. Culver City was one of the first school districts to require the COVID vaccine, assisted high school students to mobilize against gun violence and police brutality against the black community. A ceasefire resolution is the next brave step for Culver City that they must take. This issue affects way more people in Culver City than is realized. And as the leaders of our city, it is imperative that this is addressed and not swept under the rug like it has been since October 7th. We must realize and recognize pointless bombing that only results in death and destruction, and it must end. Please hear us and allow us to use our voice and opinion and agendize a ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Camila Huntley with one minute seated.
Hello, my name is Camila. I am a Culver City resident and a product of the Culver City schools. I'm speaking today to urge each of the council members to agendize a ceasefire resolution. This past year, I served as the ASP president of Culver City High School. As a leader, I saw my school community being directly affected by the conflict in Palestine and Israel. From teachers being silenced and feeling the need to avoid the topic at school, to students not being able to openly share what they felt and thought about this current event, while having to be secretive and private about the issue. Culver City High School has been a welcoming and uplifting environment, but now it's a risk to simply speak about the world atrocity. Agendizing the ceasefire resolution is a necessary step to finally start the conversation that many have been forced to keep to themselves. It will allow us to acknowledge what is happening in our world, issues that may not be in our backyard but are clearly affecting those in our community, and in the end, show that Culver City cares, not only about their community members, but for humanity and the human life. Our city leaders are voted in to represent us. And as someone who was voted in to represent their students, I do not see how limiting or dismissing their wants is even a thought that would come to mind. As a representative of my students, I took the role to honor their wishes and wants, regardless of where I sit on the various issues, because that is what I promised to do. You, as our representatives, have made the same commitment, so please do not continue to silence our voices and allow us to share our truth by agendizing the ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
And our next list of speakers are Daniel Nikfarjum, Samantha Mohammed, Shaheen Nasar, Cynthia Clinchfuss, and Kristin Schrur.
Madam Mayor, City Council. I stand here before you today, not just as a resident of Culver City, but as a Jewish Persian American. Judaism has been a very large part of my life. I went to Hebrew school. I was bar mitzvahed. I volunteered for various programs. And one of the main things that I remember from my time was when my rabbi asked us and taught us about the concept of Tikun Olam. The concept is a core belief in Judaism that asks not only of all people, but of Jews in particular, that it is our duty and obligation to repair the world. Now, I stand here as a Jew, and I can tell you with 100% certainty that in order, that by asking for a ceasefire resolution and for agendizing a ceasefire resolution is in no way whatsoever an antisemitic act. In fact, it is the most Jewish thing you could possibly do because it goes to the tenet of Tikun Olam, to fix the world. It is our duty to make this place better. And the only time that I, as a Jew, have ever felt harmed, hurt, or in any way attacked from my beliefs in support of these Palestinian people is from Jews that I have grown up with my entire life. I've been surrounded here in this community with people who, regardless of my religion, have said that they will support me, that they care about me, that they see that I'm important. And it's important that we pass that today.
Samantha Mohammed, followed by Shaheen Nasar.
Dear mayor and city council members, my name is Samantha Mohammed. I'm a proud, mixed Palestinian-Mexican-American, born and raised in LA County. I'm a resident of Culver City and have been for the last few years. Also a resident of Palms for the years before that as I went to UCLA for my undergrad, my masters, my med school training to become a physician dedicated to serving the underserved, to serving communities made marginalized. I've done so much work for these populations. And just finishing residency, the thing that always got me through it was thinking that eventually, finally, I'd be able to go visit my homeland. I'd go visit my families back home. I'd get to go to harvest olives with my family. I'd get to go make food with them. And now I can't. I haven't seen them in over 10 years, and I won't be able to see them anytime soon, unless we pass a ceasefire resolution. We need to do as much movement as we can to get people moving in the right direction. And not to disrespect any other speakers here, but I've heard these comments that our voice doesn't matter, that this is not important to Culver City, but knowing that my tax dollars are going towards the killing of my own family, my distant family, my relatives, it's impossible. The times that I had shifts where I was working 24 to 28 hours a day, I was thinking about them. I was watching the news, reading the news every second to see if their names would pop up on there. Imagine doing that while trying to take care of the lives of other people. It is not easy. Thank you.
Next, we have Shaheen Nasar. We have a Shaheen on WebEx. You're unmuted. Go ahead.
City council members and mayor, my name is Shaheen Nasar. I have, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I have a connection to the city as someone who gives sermons in its local mosques and someone who is a friend and proud supporter of the great institution that was the gratitude market. I'm a Palestinian-American whose family is from Gaza. Seventeen members of my family have been murdered by Israel's illegal siege and genocidal activity in the past two decades, half of whom have died in the past 10 months. Among them was my relative, Bisan Albesos, who was an eight-year-old girl who wanted to grow up to be a doctor. Instead, the light of her life was extinguished by Israel's genocide, the most extreme manifestation of racist violence. My cousin Tamir is still alive, and I have been messaging him whenever I can get a hold of him for the past 10 months, under the constant fear that he may be among the casualties. Now, I believe your city has a statement about its commitment to racial equality. Your indifference and silence towards Israeli apartheid and genocide is a silent expression of support towards that genocide and a violation of your commitment to racial equity. And I also want to mention that Culver City gives $663,000 in terms of our contributions, our national contributions to Israel's military. And I just want to remind everyone that we remember in November, and hopefully you choose a path away from moral cowardice and make the right decision, agendize a ceasefire resolution and pass it. Thank you.
And our next list of speakers are Cynthia Clinchfuss, Kristin Schrur, Salma Ibrahim, Tasneem Noor, Melissa Sanders, Andrea Cohen, and Jared Bailey. Cynthia is not in the chambers nor on WebEx. The next speaker is Kristin Schrur. Kristin is also not in the chambers nor on WebEx. Salma Ibrahim. With one minute seated.
Hello, my name is Salma Ibrahim, and I have lived in Culver City all my life, and I'm a recent CCHS grad. I'm speaking today to ask you to agendize an immediate and permanent mutual ceasefire agreement, following suit with 16 other SoCal cities. I grew up in King Fahd Mosque and spent almost every day since I was 15 there, reading and learning the Quran, going to Islamic studies and breaking my fast there every night during Ramadan. I, like many other children there, was raised on stories told by our parents who fled war-torn countries. I would lay on auntie's laps and listen to them recall how, back then, when things were good, and how they spoke as if they were returning home at any moment. Their fingers weaving through my hair as a calm tone overtook their voices, and it seemed as if they were braiding their memories into my hair, as the more time I spent with them, the more I gained a nostalgic yearning ache for places I have never known and are quickly disappearing. My masjid has been hit pretty hard by the genocide in Palestine. Every Friday, the list of names being read out should pray for it. The family sitting shocked as their nieces, nephews, and brothers' names would be recited over the microphone, followed by a loud and droning amen, soft shakes of the head and sometimes a sigh that carries the weight of 76 years of prayers. Every Friday, the list grows, and every Friday, I try to remember their names. It's the remembering that is the hard part. The best way to dehumanize a group and justify such actions is to forget their humanity. It is easier to remember the bombs and the brash military parades than it is to remember that there was a grandmother who would sit outside and people watch, tea in hand. There was a mother who would collapse onto her bed after a long day of work, kick her shoes off and sigh. And there was a little girl who loved how her dad's scratchy stubble felt when he kissed her forehead. It is harder to remember that you that you probably share a birthday with someone who has been killed in Gaza because The New York Times says that three or more Hamas officials have been found hiding under hospitals. That it's easier to remember numbers and percentages than favorite colors and foods they hate. It makes the land grabs more justifiable. This is an injustice and fail, this is an injustice and failure on our parts we must constantly take accountability for. This is a wound we must keep raw and a thought at the foreground of our minds, because to die a martyr is to inject blood into the veins of society and I hope to never have to see the faces of my community. Our community looked that way every Friday prayer. We must push and come together to ensure the safety and well-being of each other. And right now, ensuring the safety and well-being of everyone in our community is passing a ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Tasneem Noor.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much. I'm Tasneem Noor. I'm a resident of Culver City of 24 years. I have found Culver City as a diverse place where everyone feels welcomed and more safe than many other cities around us. And I love being part of Culver City. 16 cities in Southern California have passed a resolution seeking an immediate and permanent mutual ceasefire, and I feel like we're behind. While such a resolution may do little to change politics and conditions in Palestine and Israel, what this resolution does do is tell us, the residents of Culver City, that there is no space for binary thinking, no space for division and/or hate in our city. We do not have to choose the safety of one group over the other. We are committed to the well-being of one another, no matter our race, ethnicity, religion, and politics. Some of my students have been asking, is it okay to kill 40 Palestinians to get one Hamas? Teens are asking, do I have to, why do I have to explain that Palestinians are people, not terrorists? Why isn't everyone just as mad about innocent children dying as I am? Why do people think I'm a terrorist sympathizer because I'm sad to see other children having no space, safe place to go? We have an obligation as leaders to answer these questions. Our children, kids, should not be asking these questions. Thank you.
Melissa Sanders, you're unmuted.
I hope you guys can hear me.
Yes.
As a Culver City resident and as a member of Temple Akiba, listening to these people, most of the people who have been speaking tonight is incredibly disturbing. I will agree with Gary Zeiss that there is no winner on either side of this, but the fact that this is seemingly a one-sided request or demand really is pretty horrifying. This whole thing started as a terrorist attack. Hamas started this on October 7th, killed thousands, took hundreds hostage, and now we have people claiming that only Palestinians being killed is the problem. And that is simply not true. I have family in Israel, and they matter to me. So when you're working with a group that only wants to kill an entire segment of population because they're Jewish, it is unacceptable to demand a ceasefire before anything else is resolved. So I beg of you to do nothing because this is Culver City. You are not supposed to lead us in international politics. And those who are upset that their tax dollars are going to war, then stop paying your federal taxes. The amounts Culver City pays is barely a missile. Please deal with reality, and please stop blaming us.
Next, we have Andrea Cohen, Jared Bailey, Paulie Stenberg, Ryan Sanders, and Sam Shofani.
Hello, mayor and city council members. My name is Andrea Cohen, and I—my husband and I have lived in Culver City since the summer of 1998. Like many American Jews, I have family, close family, in Israel. I worry about my sister, her husband, her children, and grandchildren constantly, and we have been in closer contact since October 7th. My sis—three of my sister's children have served in the IDF because they are required to. My youngest nephew's reserve unit twice has been deployed to Gaza and once to northern Israel. One of my nieces was evacuated from her home in the north of the country, still has not been able to return. I am horrified and distressed about the killing of tens of thousands of innocent Palestinians, the utter destruction in Gaza. Israelis and Palestinians must be able to live in safety, dignity, and peace. There is no either-or. There is only both. The land belongs neither exclusively to Israelis nor exclusively to Palestinians. The only way to arrive at this ideal of peace is through an immediate ceasefire, the return of hostages, and of unlawfully detained—of unlawfully detained prisoners, and for all people, peoples of the region, to find new leaders for whom lasting peace is paramount. I support the call by my fellow city council—Culver City residents for putting an agenda—putting on the agenda a ceasefire resolution and passing it. Thank you.
Jerry—Jared, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Jared Bailey, and I have been a resident of Culver City for over 10 years. It is imperative we agendize and pass an immediate and permanent ceasefire resolution. Not only is it a morally and ethically correct position, but it also helps safeguard our community and our Palestinian and Muslim neighbors. Incidents of anti-Muslim hate crimes have increased since October, including the stabbing of a six-year-old Palestinian boy and the shooting of three Palestinian-American college students in Vermont. A ceasefire resolution is not only a call for peace abroad, but for here at home as well. Help protect our Palestinian and Muslim neighbors by passing a ceasefire resolution. Over 40,000 Palestinians have been brutally massacred in Gaza, half of them children. We simply cannot sit idly as another 40,000 Palestinians are murdered. Pass a ceasefire resolution now. Ensure safety and peace prevails.
Next, we have Brian Sanders, followed by Sam Shafani. Brian Sanders with one minute seated.
Hello, mayor, vice mayor, council staff. So, you know, the Jews are used to this. Just that statement alone elicits laughter, I suppose. The Jews are used to this. Tonight—tonight hasn't been mentioned is Tisha B'Av, one of the saddest days in Jewish history, where we commemorate the destruction of both the first and the second holy temples in Jerusalem. Now, that didn't happen recently. It happened over 2,000 years ago, and also about 2,500 years ago, twice. And since that time, the Jews have seen many acts of violence and destruction, specifically occurring on this day, Tisha B'Av. And you'll notice that the Iranian jihadists chose August 12th on purpose as the day of threat to strike yet again. That was on purpose. It's not an accident. So it's particularly disturbing that I, as a Jew and as a Culver City resident, and a West Side resident born and raised in Santa Monica, that I should have to stand here and listen to this hatred. It's unbelievable. I—I can't understand it. I mean, nobody here wants war or death. That's true. But why should we come out here to attack each other?
Mr. Sanders, if you could direct your comments to us, please.
It's unbelievable. Absolutely unbelievable. So—you know, to condemn Hamas should be our primary goal, if we're going to talk about anything regarding what's going on here. But you see, the Jews are used to this. We're used to the Holocaust inversion. We're used to the slander, "Oh, it's a genocide. Oh, it's apartheid." We're used to this. We've been dealing with this for thousands of years, and unfortunately, it looks like it's not going to stop anytime soon. So I hope that you will do nothing with this ceasefire resolution, because it is but yet another tool, a propaganda tool, from the Iranian jihadists, who have done a very good job of infiltrating American universities in propaganda all over, throughout these nonprofit organizations. Please, do nothing. This is ridiculous.
Sam Shafani with one minute seated. Mr. Sanders, if you can have a seat, please. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council members. I'm here neither on one side or the other. I'm a 27-year U.S.
Hold on for a second, sir. Hold on for a second.
Can you take my time back, please?
Yeah, can we give him the time back? Okay. Thank you so much for being here, sir.
Can I reclaim my time?
They're going to give it back to you. Right, city clerk? You're going to get—make sure he gets the full time? Wonderful. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, ma'am. Again, good evening, mayor. Good evening, council members, everyone here. I'm—I'm neither on one side or the other, but I speak tactfully. I'm a 27-year veteran of the U.S. Marine Corps. I've been to 12-plus combat tours. I've been—I've been to Gulf War I, Gulf War II, III, IV, Somalia, Haiti, Kosovo, you name it. I've been in every combat conflict since '91, and I've seen war firsthand. What I don't agree with is the disproportionate bombardment of civilian atrocities that I've seen on TV. I don't believe that the IDF is the most moral army in the world, because what they're doing to the civilians, to the family, and to the children are not of a moral ethic. So I call on you to call for a ceasefire. I hate no one, but what I am for is humanity. I don't dislike the Jews. I don't dislike the Arabs. I don't dislike the Palestinians. What I do like is humanity, and when we stand up together and vote for humanity, we win. We win peace. We win love, and we don't have to face wars anymore. So please, bring that vote to your agendas.
Next, we have Lori Horn. Lori, you're on WebEx. We're going to unmute you. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, give me one second. Okay. The first speaker tonight opens speaking of not being divisive and began by singling out Jewish children. Calling for a ceasefire in itself is not problematic. It's what so often does or does not go with that call that is problematic. Failing to call for the safety of the hostages each time we call for a ceasefire is made. Failing to mention the Israelis, who were devastatingly maimed and raped and hurt on October 7th each time we call for a ceasefire. One speaker called out the building with posters for the release of hostages as an affront, as if we have to compete to suffer. The painful irony of calling for peace and justice for all but then not including all is problematic. The pain of war and suffering pulls at all of our hearts. Packing the room or yelling louder does not make their pain more acute than my pain. Their emotional responses do not make their arguments more real than mine. Their family's suffering is not more tender or tragic than mine. To them, I say, the war in Israel would have ended months ago, and it will end today if the terrorist organization Hamas surrenders and lets the hostages and citizens of Gaza go. If you want the war to end, call for Hamas to let all our people go. To the council, I say, the Anti-Defamation League urges public officials to keep these highly problematic issues that go along with calls for ceasefire resolutions in mind.
Michael Hirsch is not on WebEx nor in the chambers. Next, we'll call on Jasmine Delgado, followed by Haifa Mamar, Monica Richardson, and Donna
Good evening, council. My name is Jasmine. I'm a Jewish Mexican-American woman and a resident of Culver City. I was a graduate of La Boyona Elementary. Go Lions, Culver Middle. Go Panthers. And CCHS, go Centaurs. I have also had the privilege of being part of the Culver Palms YMCA Youth and Government, where every Thursday evening, my peers and I presided, debated, and legislated mock bills and resolutions in the very seats you all occupy now. I'm here to implore the council to agendize a resolution in support of a permanent ceasefire in Gaza. As a first-time mom, I have watched the endless slaughter and dismemberment of the Palestinian people, including countless of infants and children, since my son was two months old. He is soon to be 13 months and 10 days. I have witnessed an unimaginable amount of children his age at every stage of life's life lose their limbs before they can even crawl, lose their parents, and lose their lives. I fell to the floor and wept when it was uncovered that after the siege on Al-Shifa Hospital, newborns were left to die and rot in their incubators by the IDF. Every day, you make history as our representatives. Every week, you legislate the history of this city, encoded into laws or regulations through presentations, awards, and resolutions. Whether you are conscientious about the history-making or not, the effects are profound. Do you, as our representatives, want Culver City to support and represent the call for peace? A ceasefire is the beginning of negotiations for peace and reparations. A permanent ceasefire would stop the death toll from rising. To ignore your constituents' call for a ceasefire is to ignore the death and destruction and the continuation of this genocide. To simply agendize—
Miss Delgado, your time has expired.
—resolut—fire, show an ounce of humanity, regard for peace, for life, for Culver City as global citizens.
Thank you, Ms. Delgado. Our next speaker is Haifa Mamar, Monica Richardson, followed by Donna LeBlanc.
Good evening. I am part of the Culver City Equity and Human Relations Committee, but tonight, I'm presenting myself. I'm going to talk about cities and that have always been the heart of change, and now, more than ever, they can lead the change in demanding a ceasefire in Gaza. I do firmly believe that when cities unite in passing ceasefire resolutions, they wield the collective power of their citizens and—of the—sorry—of the citizens to have—to have—to have like—to have a—to have—to have a strength in having every city say yes to the ceasefire. That will look good in one—with the negotiation process, when actually, the ceasefire or the negotiations between Israel and the Palestinians via the United States will—that will make us in a stronger place. So please, 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 for the sake of these children, for the sake of these women, for the sake of these young men—and I'm not saying anything about Hamas. And I'm—I want to also say, I extend my condolences to every Jewish person in this room and outside for their loss in October 7th. I was in—I was in the Middle East when this happened, and it was horrific. I was at the airport seeing planes getting canceled to Tel Aviv, one after another, and I didn't know what was happening. And then I looked at CNN, and I said, "This is horrible, what's happening." I couldn't believe it. So please, do consider the ceasefire. It reflects who we are as a community. I am actually an Arab, and I'm Muslim, and I'm actually from Saudi Arabia, and I'm—I love—my favorite people that supported us are the Jewish people. So please, be kind.
Monica is not in the chambers nor on WebEx. Next, we'll call on Donna LeBlanc. Donna is also not in the chambers nor on WebEx. Next, we'll call on Bubba Fish with one minute seated. Bubba, you're unmuted.
...that impacts our community deeply. 172 councils across the U.S., including our neighbors in Santa Monica, Pasadena, Glendale, Long Beach, and the LA County and California State Democratic Parties, have all adopted ceasefire resolutions. It's also supported by over 80% of Democrats and 2/3 of voters across party lines. And our leaders are listening. Supervisor Mitchell issued a statement supporting a ceasefire. Vice President Kamala Harris just said at a rally this weekend, "Now is the time for a ceasefire deal." And, you know, I'm no foreign policy expert, but as a Jewish person, I feel that our voices matter now more than ever. Our grief from the hatred and violence that we have experienced should never be used as a justification for more violence. But as Jews, we are told that if we stand up for our Palestinian, Arab, and Muslim brothers and sisters, we are somehow denigrating ourselves. I am reminded of this quote from Rabbi Hillel, "If I am not for me, who will be for me? And when I am for myself alone, what am I? And if not now, then when?" Council, I believe the time is now. Here in Culver City, I've met many Jewish neighbors who also want an end to the violence being committed in our name. We bond over challenging conversations we have with family and friends, and how we can be better advocates in our own communities for peace and for the Palestinians and Israelis to live with dignity and freedom. I once believed that my Jewish identity complicated my feelings on this conflict, but I know now that it clarifies them. Judaism teaches us that all people are created "By Selim Elohim," or in God's image. So let it be known that we raise our voices tonight for our brothers and sisters in God's image, and for our ancestors and all of our descendants to say never again to anyone. Thank you so much.
And our next speakers are Mirvet Jude, Joan Davidson, Ellie Levi, Neil Tabacnik, Thistle Boozinger, Helen Sklar, and Pamela Irwin. Mirvet, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Hello, Salam aleikum. Peshi pani. Thank you for this opportunity to speak tonight. I'm a Palestinian-American that has gone all across Southern California to help pass ceasefire resolutions, because I have watched in terror the genocide of my people, and I have a family—I have family members that are currently in prison in West Bank. As you know, 30% of the people that are held hostage there are children. And I have a friend who lost 450 family members in Gaza. This is not a war. This is an assault. This is not to say that Israel doesn't have a right to defend itself, but this is not a defense. This is a genocide. This is what the ICJ determined it as. During a genocide, it is the job of everyone, everyone, to try to stop it. A ceasefire isn't one-sided. It's for both sides. It's for both sides. No one is safer for this to carry on. 90% of the infrastructure of Gaza is gone. It is said that over 200,000 civilians have been murdered. At least 40% of them are children and women. Not that men's lives don't matter. What will it take? Every city is contributing to this genocide. Hence, it is a local issue. It's a local issue because $687,000 from Culver City go towards this genocide. What will it take for us to beg people to stop the killing? Stopping the killing is not just stopping the killing of Palestinians, but Israelis too. Jewish lives, Muslim lives, Palestinian lives, Christian lives, American lives are not safer by this carrying on.
And our next speaker is Joan Davidson, followed by Eli Levi. Joan is not on WebEx nor in the chambers. Our next speaker is Eli Levi.
Good evening. My name is Eli Levy. I've practiced immigration law for 24 years, and my family has had a home in Fox Hills, Culver City, since 1978. Tonight, I'll be speaking in favor of agendizing a ceasefire resolution. Textbook genocide, textbook genocide, textbook genocide. These are not my words, though they surely merit my concurrence. These are the words of Professor Ross Segal, an internationally respected Israeli authority on genocide. As a Israeli-born and raised American national, I stand before you frankly contemplating which of my effing passports I should burn. After all, it is abundantly clear to all of us, that is, those of us not indoctrinated by Israel's propaganda machine, that both of my criminal countries of nationality are engaging in a co-genocidal, co-genocidal campaign of one massacre after another under the vomit-inducing guise of self-defense. How can any Jew, how can any Jew here authentically tout the Jewish bona fides by denying this Holocaust? Holocaust deniers, I should never understand that. Now, please, please do not embarrass, do not embarrass our city by not agendizing this resolution simply because of the insidious, static, static manufactured around this resolution by those who obviously, obviously do not value the lives of Palestinian children as much as they do their own.
Next, we have Neil Tabacnik.
Thank you, council members. I'd like to start with a shout-out to CCPD, the great force. Thank you for being here, and my respect for all of you who showed up. You showed up, and I appreciate it. You're fighting for your people. I fight a little bit for my people. My name is Neil. My politics: I'm against anxiety, suffering, and death for everyone. I mourn your children.
Sir, if you can direct your comments to the council, please. Thank you so much.
A ceasefire without a meaningful peace plan in place is merely kicking the can down the road, not saving lives but deferring deaths. With a meaningful peace plan, we have somewhere to go. Otherwise, we're only asking here for a victory for Hamas for October 7th as they've promised endless additional October 7ths to achieve their goals. This is an inappropriate issue for this forum, and I conclude by saying, "Free Palestine from Hamas." Thank you very much.
And our next speakers are Pamela Irwin, Joy Rodriguez, and Scott Stevens.
I'm a nurse. I'm an actor. Reiki master, recently became an activist since October 7th because frankly, what has been happening has completely changed my life. Because someone talked about the truth earlier. Once you learn the truth, your life completely changes, and you cannot go back. I don't know where you guys get your information from. I know there's not a lot of time, so I'm just going to throw out some names out there, academics, podcasts, that maybe will help enlighten and debunk the longstanding Zionist narrative that has taken over the United States of America. Democracy Now!, The Gray Zone, Electron Antifada, Zeteo, Katie Helper, Breaking the Silence, Betzalem, Miko Paled, Nurit Paled, Neura Aricat, Chris Hedges, Ilan Papé, Gideon Levy, Amira Haas, Rashida Khalidi, Mukizzi Street, Anthony Lowenstein, Breakthrough News, Francesca Albines, Albi Shlem, Norman Finkelstein, Scott Ritter, Diana Blutu. There are so many. If you want to learn the truth, it is there. Align yourselves with international law. Align yourselves with humanity. And then I'll close with the words of Aaron Buchnell, who was an active-duty U.S. Air Force who self-immolated at the Israeli Embassy in D.C. in February of 2024. His words, "Many of us like to ask ourselves, 'What would I do if I was alive during slavery?' Or the Jim Crow South, or apartheid? 'What would I do if my country was committing genocide?' The answer is, you're doing it now, right now. I ask you to do something, agendize a ceasefire." Thank you.
Next, we have Joy Rodriguez and Scott Stevens and Linda Milazzo. Joy is not in the chambers nor on WebEx, so we'll call on Scott Stevens. Scott is also not in the chambers nor on WebEx. So, our next speaker is Linda Milazzo, followed by Reverend Heidi Warden-Gamble and Tony Higgins, David Cairo, Joanne Torrisi Luna, Kayla Shore, Beth Lane, Gassan Kuri, and Ayman Mafouz.
Hi, my name is Linda Milazzo. I too am a Jew. I'm not a victim. I'm a Jew. I live very well. My friends live very well. My family lives very well. The people in Israel live very well. We're all doing well. There are hardly any of us who are really, really, really suffering. I could talk to you about 2,000 years ago. I could talk to you about 2,500 years ago. But I'd like to do a little math. 40,000 people live in Culver City. That's how many people have been killed in Gaza. Your entire city would be gone if you were in Gaza today. They don't have anything. And you watch the same news that I watch. If you watch corporate news, you don't watch the news that my friend Pam just spelled out for you. But you're seeing the similar things to what I'm seeing, and I have no understanding of how you could even spend one second wondering whether or not you should vote for a ceasefire. It makes no sense to me. And I don't understand Jews who do not want to stop the Holocaust that is happening in Gaza every single day. And it is a Holocaust. Jews don't own Holocaust. There have been many Holocausts. And the one that we're living through now, we can stop, but we choose not to. And I don't understand why. So, please, if you've even spent one minute of your time looking at the news and it bothered you, then vote to stop it. Stop continuing.
Our next speaker is Reverend Heidi Warden-Gamble. You're unmuted. Go ahead.
Great. To our honorable mayor and members of the city council, my name is Reverend Heidi Warden-Gamble. I'm a Presbyterian pastor who has lived in Culver City for over 23 years. Both of my daughters are graduates of Culver City High School. My youngest daughter, the class of 2024. I work for the Presbyterian Church USA in the L.A. region, and we have had mission partners in Palestine and Israel that span decades, even hundreds of years. We deeply grieved and were directly impacted by the terrorist attacks on October 7th. Many of our church members in the L.A. area had family members who lost loved ones or had to be evacuated immediately after the attacks. The stated clerk of our General Assembly of the Presbyterian Church USA publicly condemned the attacks and called for a release of the hostages on behalf of our denomination. However, in the ensuing months, we have been equally horrified to hear of the atrocities being committed against innocent lives in Palestine. This is why the PCUSA began calling for a ceasefire. We have since sent teams to Palestine to witness the horror going on there, and Presbyterians who returned say it's worse than the reports we're receiving. This is without a doubt a horrific genocide. This week, in one of our partners, Reverend Dr. Isaac Munther, a Palestinian pastor, spoke to us. Gaza is the moral compass of the world, he says. We are watching a genocide unfold in front of us. We cannot normalize this. Every little action matters, he says, especially in the United States. Please hear our prayerful plea for a ceasefire. Thank you.
Tony Higgins, followed by David Cairo.
Good evening. I'd like to use a little wall clock analogy maybe to get some of you who might be on the fence about the effectiveness of a resolution by a small city. There are 42,300 or so seconds to go 12 hours on that wall clock. There are 35,000 cities in the United States. Ultimately, second by second, you get there. And ultimately, city by city, you can make a difference by passing a resolution. Now, I'm here personally with a lot of other folks protesting for a resolution for a ceasefire and a return of the hostages and for a better future for the children on both sides. I'm here asking you to do your duty, to do your part, your one second, your little part, be part of the 35,000 cities that we need to end the violence. Thank you.
Next, we have David Cairo. You're unmuted.
May council, as a longtime resident of Fox Hills, my neighbors and I are very concerned about the upcoming development of 5,700 Hanom. This project relates to a tremendous increase in traffic and noise pollution and will exacerbate the already congested parking situation, making it much more difficult for residents and visitors to find parking. Our neighborhood's way of life will be severely impacted and wear a pulse to the development in our area. I will speak about the inequality and how different neighborhoods of Culver City are treated. I live in the most dense and most culturally diverse area of Culver City, Fox Hills. The new plan puts the state-relied density distribution all in Fox Hills. The planning commission mentioned at the recent planning meeting that they wanted to make it a walkable neighborhood and put in cafes so people could get coffee. We have businesses, including the Fox Hills Mallway, within walking distance. There are plenty of opportunities for coffee shops. They say that the developers don't find the Buckingham Heights as convenient, and they don't want to build housing on the north side of Slauson. The single-family housing neighborhoods request to be kept at status quo. Why? Because they're predominantly affluent. We demand that there is equal distribution of density throughout the city. High-rise buildings should be built along major arteries like Sepulveda, Slauson, Jefferson, Overland, and Washington. That's the proper way to add density. Thank you.
Next, we have Kayla. Kayla Shore.
Hello, mayor and council. My name is Kayla Shore. I'm an active member of the Jewish community in the Culver City area. I live just across the street in Palms, but I'm in Culver City every day, working, going to parks, shopping, and appreciating everything that the city has to offer. I'm a Jew who's very proud of my heritage and my tradition, and I'm committed and connected to my community. I have family who died in the Holocaust, who fled pogroms. My parents met in Israel-Palestine. Family who have served in the IDF. I'm an active member in my synagogue here in L.A. Because of the values I learned growing up in this tradition, I must stand against the genocide of Palestinians by Israel. Tonight begins Tishabah Av, which was mentioned before. It's a commemoration of mourning, of the destruction of the first and second temples in the Jewish tradition. And there are many ways to interpret this tradition. We lament, we mourn. And one of the things that is required of us at Tishabah Av is to turn towards consciousness, to turn away from denial, to turn towards our own suffering. And so, I encourage those who are here with us, both Jews and non-Jews, to sit with the suffering, to turn towards the loss of our own people, and not to use that loss and instrumentalize it to cause and commit genocide against another people. That is no way to heal. That is no way towards safety. And I see this, as many have said, as a local issue because of the way our taxes are spent, diverted from housing, other social services that we need so badly. So, I'm here to ask you all to agendize our resolution for a ceasefire in Culver City and join the many other cities across the country. Thank you.
Next, we have Joanne Torrisi. Joanne is not in the chambers nor on WebEx. We'll move on to Beth Lane. Beth, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Oh, hi. There we go. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Imani McLaurin and vice mayor and council. I'm Beth Lane. I live in the community, and I'm also the Neighborhood Association Board President since 2020. I wasn't sure if this item was going to come up. I was going to speak on item A1, but I do realize that this proposed bike path, pedestrian bike path, and going from Ince Boulevard over to the Bologna Creek, and also to...
Ms. Lane, do you want to speak on A1? Because we will get to that. We're still at joint public comment for items not on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. My name, I did write in for A1, but while I'm here, if I could use the last 50 seconds...
Absolutely, you can.
Thank you. I would like to say, back to Rancho Higera Neighborhood Association, I want the council to remember that we had a construction of our Neighborhood Management Traffic Program in 2021. And we did put in a proposal for the NTMP plan as far back as 2016. So...
Ms. Lane, you're breaking up just a little bit.
...all the NTMP. Okay, the NTMP that was approved by council was put into construction in September of 2021, and we're now looking at a lot of things that still have... and I'd counsel to take a look at that at some point again, and we'll come back to that as another agenda item, perhaps to discuss the forward-moving plan for our community, our 10-block community of Rancho Higera. Thank you so much, and I will hopefully hang on for the A1 item a little later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next, we have Gassan Kuri with one minute seated.
Honorable members of city council, my name is Gassan Kuri. I'm a medical doctor. I live in Santa Monica as part of the Santa Monica ceasefire resolution. As we gather here today, it's important that we confront the moral weight of the decision before us. Imagine those who cheered as Jewish... Imagine those who cheered as Jewish children were sent to their death during the Holocaust, or those who applauded the public lynchings of African-American children during the era of the KKK. History has judged them harshly, and rightly so. If the city doesn't pass a ceasefire resolution, it aligns itself with those same dark forces of history. How can anyone justify or ignore the continuation of what is becoming the most documented mass murder of children in our time? I understand the fear to speak up, many of you feel, knowing that our government has been unwavering in its support of Israel, arming them even as these atrocities occur. But let me remind you, this is not what the people want. This is the agenda of a few decision-makers whose voices have been bought by foreign interests through organizations like AIPAC. You have the power to stand on the right side of history today. Please agendize a ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
And our last speaker, Ayman Mafuz. Ayman, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Hi, council members. So I'm not going to piece your human part. You know, who cares about mutilated children thousands of miles away? I'm just gonna... They don't vote. They don't have a vote. Let's talk about those who vote. Look at the crowd. Look at the people who spoke today. Muslims, Christians, Hindus, and Jews, Latinos, Asians, Arabs, whites, blacks, Persians, young students, adults, and seniors, right? These are your constituents. If you don't issue a ceasefire resolution, you have failed your constituents. You've already taken part of this, in this narrative. You've already posted the sign on Overland that when I saw, I felt, uh-oh, they inserted themselves in a 100-year-old conflict, and now you can't back out. You've already tried to appease to a very thin slice of Culver City, the Zionist community. Now, the whole society, the whole community of Culver City is coming to you and say, take a stand. There are no sides to this conflict. There is humanity side. Bombing people lining up for food. You can't take the side of those who bombed those. Starving a whole population. There are no sides to that. You want to condemn? Hamas condemned IDF. Now it's your turn to do that. Please, please, take a side today. And, you know, those who call us racist and call us antisemites, they're not going to silence us. They're not going to terrorize us. And I hope they don't silence you, too. Thank you.
That was our last... Okay.
My name is Esti Chandler. Culver City is the hub of my family's life. However, most of our extended family lives in Israel, and many of our friends live in Gaza and the West Bank. I'm a filmmaker and a human rights advocate who has woken up for the past 311 mornings terrified about all of their safety amidst the most documented genocide in human history. As my rabbi wrote, "The ongoing violence in the Middle East is confronting us all with the most critical moral challenge of our lifetimes." He said ceasefire resolutions are more than symbolic exercises. They recognize that we, as a community, and as community members, have personal and civic stakes in events that take place around the world. We believe in the lived reality of never again for everyone, all people living safely with freedom, equality, and self-determination. According to the World Health Organization, the population of Gaza is, quote, "starving to death." This is a genocide. Nothing could be more Jewish than asking you to join a nationwide effort to stop it by agendizing and passing a resolution calling for an immediate and permanent ceasefire. History has her eyes on all of us. For the rest of our lives, we will be asked what we did to stop this genocide. What will your answer be? I hope you will be able to tell your children and grandchildren about leading your council to pass a ceasefire resolution to help save every human life possible. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all for the robust public comment for items not on the agenda. Can we have a receipt and filing of the correspondence received by 3:00 PM for today's meeting?
I have a motion by Councilmember Erickson, second by Councilmember Vera.
May we begin voting?
I'm not getting the screen.
How do you vote?
All right.
Thank you. That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. We will take the order of agenda as it's printed, so no changes there. Moving on to consent, any items to poll? Councilmember Vera.
No, Mayor.
Councilmember Erickson.
C5.
Okay. Councilmember Pusa.
No, Mayor. Thank you.
Vice Mayor O'Brien.
Sorry, we're zooming all of a sudden. I believe it's C10. It's the lighting. Correct?
Yeah, for the streetlight replacement?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to pull 7, 8, and 13. And again, for the record, C14 has been pulled, or won't be heard this evening, not pulled. So can we start with C5? Do you need a brief staff report, Councilmember Erickson?
I have some questions.
Okay.
But I don't need a staff report.
Okay.
On the second page of the staff report, the last paragraph there, staff talks about soft retrofit. I'm just curious if the numbers that are there, if they are updated, or if we're using numbers that are a couple of years old, because what I hear from the community is that the quotes they are getting is higher than the range we have there, where we talk about, you know, 45,000 to 135,000. So my comment is really, maybe we should revisit and make sure that the numbers are right, so we know when we go for the grants and so on, and that we have the right numbers.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Dimitri, Director of Public Works. Thank you, Councilmember Erickson, for this question. The numbers we have in the staff report are the latest numbers that we have. But right before we proceed with the work, we will revise and tweak these numbers to get the latest.
Yeah, great, because I got a call from two different property owners who said, no, that's way too low for what we've been quoted. And those were like six-unit buildings. Okay, appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I follow up, Mayor?
Sure.
Dimitri, just to follow up on that. Do you know our supportive programs, you know, like the 25% assistance, are those available through the grant application processes that completing this plan allows us to access? Or does that money come out of general fund?
That comes out of general fund, because most grant applications have a local match. In this particular case, it's a 25%. They usually vary from as low as 11%, I have seen them, up to... This one is on the high end, 25%. But this has to be borne by the local agency, which is us.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on C5?
We do have two speakers for C5.
Okay, wonderful. Let's go then.
Our first speaker is Rob Basilian, followed by Dobie Hi.
Hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, wow, 3 minutes. I thought after that little bout of verbal terrorism this evening, I'd be shortened. Certainly makes you feel for the hostages. But I digress. I want to keep it short. Thank you for bringing this up, Council, tonight, because, you know, we were talking about it, retrofitting for mom-and-pop operations, and it's a huge cost to us. You know, I also wonder about, you know, the city's estimates. But I would like to see if we can somehow agendize some of this stuff. We have a few requests of City Council. One is, you know, I agree with Dan and Yaron that I think we need a revised cost estimate, especially considering current interest rates. We're going to be financing this stuff at twice the interest rates we would have like four or five years ago. We also want to look at pass-throughs to rent-controlled tenants. I would like to follow up with the city attorney about what is possible here, because there's been some question about what we could pass through as a city. Any programs that council can apply for to offset costs. And, you know, we're trying to shop around with vendors for retrofitting. If council can help find some good vendors for a group discount, you know, we can certainly push those vendors to our membership. And if there are any vendors listening to this call right now, feel free to reach out to me, Ron Basilian, at info@protectculvercity.org. That's info@protectculvercity.org. And, you know, while we're on the topic, you know, I heard earlier this call for civil dialogue. I won't mention the person who talked about it, but this is the person who put up our landlord doxing site.
Mr. Basilian, I'm so sorry. Can we keep the comments to C5, please, if possible?
Okay. Well, there's legal issues there that the City Council should look at. And I appreciate the butting in. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dobie Hi.
Hi. The need to retrofit is understandable. However, requiring property owners to shoulder this burden, especially with tight rent controls, increased insurance costs, administrative fees, and ever-increasing expenses is burdensome. Our family has experience with the retrofit process. There's numerous predatory engineering firms and contractors that are already reaching out to unsuspecting property owners in Culver City. Can the city develop systems to help protect from these predators? Retrofitting is very expensive. It can get even costlier if opening the stucco exposes other issues. Our small building was almost $150,000. To put this into perspective, a construction loan is five to seven years at around 10% interest, or a final payment of about $300,000. LA City offers minimal return from tenants who directly benefit from the retrofit. So please understand that everyone, they're sharing the home. Recall during the 1994 earthquake that renters benefited considerably from FEMA, where there was many homeowners that had to walk away from their homes because they were unable to get assistance from FEMA. Insurance costs have also taken a toll on property owners, with many property owners receiving non-renewals. And so just please, if you could keep those in mind, that properties that need retrofitting are also the affordable units in Culver City owned by mom-and-pops and small businesses. Additionally, I'd also like to remind everyone that Hamas, leader of Gaza, viciously attacked Israel, and Hamas refuses to return the hostages.
Can we keep the comments to C5?
I would be US reaction to drug lords attack Coachella. Some...
City Clerk, can you help me, please?
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments?
That was our final speaker for item C5.
Thank you so much. Anything else from colleagues? Okay, moving on to C10. A little out of order, but...
All right, okay. No need for a staff report. Dimitri, I'm just curious, assuming this passes, what's the timeline to begin?
Vice Mayor, I personally spoke with a gentleman up in Sacramento, Christopher Myers. And basically, as soon as we pass the resolution tonight, the agreement will be finalized, and the money will get transferred to the city in a very, very short order.
Okay. And then we can begin the work?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's it, Mayor.
So my... Well, I guess, can we go to C7? I do have a couple of questions about it. This is the write-up of all of the written reports from our CBCs.
Good evening. This is Mimi Farrell, City Clerk Specialist. Staff recommends that the City Council receive and file the annual written reports of commissions, boards, and committees. Per City Council policy, periodically, but no less than biannually, each CBC shall submit to the City Council a written report on their respective activities. And I welcome any questions. Specific information will be directed to the staff liaison for that CBC.
Yeah, for sure. So each... Couple things. A, thank you so much for the brief staff report. It would be great, and each of these almost has their own kind of formatting, although it's all memo formatting, so it would be good to kind of stylize them all the same, just if we went mine. But could we include the frequency of the meetings in each of these? I know that'd be helpful for me, because each committee, commission, and board, some meet more frequently than others, some meet less frequently. It would be helpful to sort of understand in context their list of accomplishments and their scheduled plans. Is that something that could be adopted in the next write-up? So we could even include, if totaling them is difficult, we could just include the dates that they met? If that's something that we could do, include it in the report? Because none of them would have met more than 12 times, right? So that probably would be the max for any committee, commission, and board to meet.
We could.
Okay. Thank you so much. I think it would just help contextualize how often our bodies are meeting, so that we can ensure that we're leveraging our amazing community members who've raised their hands to support us in our many endeavors through committee, commissions, and boards. So thank you for incorporating the design request and just including the frequency of meetings and that. Okay, so that's it for that one.
Mayor, may I just add something about that?
Yeah, absolutely.
During the break, I was able to attend many of the committees and commissions to just watch them go through a lot of these. Just want to give a shout out to the Parks, Recreation, and Community Services Commission. They handled a conversation about tennis, paddleboard, and pickleball very well, and they navigated a very heated conversation. And I think they came to a really nice conclusion, so just wanted to uplift that. Thank you.
So what I'm hearing, Councilmember Pusa, is that you missed meetings so much, you just went to more in the break. Is that what's going on?
Can't keep myself away.
All right. Any other comments or questions on C7?
I'll just comment that it's fantastic to read all the work they're doing.
Thank you so much. My question for C8 and C13 is primarily just, it looks like C8 was already included in our budget allocation. Is that correct? Because I don't need a staff report for them. How you doing, Chief?
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor and Councilmembers, that's correct. It's part of the budget.
Sounds good. Thank you so much. And for C13, it looks like it wasn't?
So for, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. So for C13, it is an amendment to not exceed $760,436 for elevator modernizations for the elevators in downtown Culver City. So it was included for a total of 610 in CIPP-A010. We're requesting a budget amendment to also include interior upgrades to the elevators in to the elevators in our downtown Culver City. So that's, that, so we do have in for fiscal year 24, 25, 610,000. And we're just asking for a little bit more to include, um, interior upgrades to the elevators in downtown.
Okay. But we didn't know that when we were going through the budget process? I'm sorry, I don't mean to, I'm just.
So, um, so we were more focused on the actual mechanisms and the making sure that our elevators are running properly, period. But it also makes sense at the same time to do interior upgrades, and that was an afterthought.
Okay, got it. Any comments from the public on any item that I didn't, uh, that we didn't pull?
Uh, we have a speaker for items C12 and C4 and C15.
Okay, let's hear those.
I'll go ahead and start with C4.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Um, our speaker that we have signed up is Kevin Ramirez. Not seeing them in chamber or on WebEx. We're going to go ahead and go into C12. Our speaker that we have signed up is Melissa Sanders.
Hi, good evening again. Um, two things. One, I looked at the addresses on the list of sidewalks and I did not see the sidewalks that, um, you guys had looked at in front of my house on the Lynn Blade and Alenda side that are basically become, you know, lakes when it rains. So you had mentioned that you'll put that on the list, so that was number one. But number two, I'm, I think I've sent a couple of things, um, to Dan and a few others about some kind of out-of-the-box thinking when we're looking at doing sidewalks and concrete work, about them being permeable and, um, you know, more environmentally friendly. Obviously, uh, we want to do what's best long-term, but I really hope that we're not going to hopefully just concrete over concrete and not look at some more environmentally friendly options while we're doing this would be great. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. And for item C15, we have Kevin Ramirez signed up one more time. Not seeing him on WebEx or in the chamber. Uh, that concludes our speakers.
Any other comments from colleagues on any consent items? Can I have a motion, uh, to pass consent? Do we have a motion in a second?
I see a motion made by Councilmember Rivera. And this is to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item C14. All right, I have a second by Councilmember Puzza. May begin voting.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Brien, thank you. My motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Moving on to action items. A1, discussion and direction regarding a new bike and pedestrian ramp and pathway, et cetera. Thank you. Dr. Yanni.
Hello again, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Dmitry, Director of Public Works, and I'll be joined here shortly by Matt Gaspar, our Civil Engineering Manager. Before we jump into A1, Mayor, may I please just, uh, comment on a couple of questions that came up from the speakers? Ms. Sanders had a question about the low point in front of her house during the rain, and the engineering staff right now is compiling a list of all of these low points that where water typically pools and puddles in the rain. And we're going to put out a storm drain project in the very near future to fix this problem. So there will be catch basins at all these low points connected to the storm drain system. Another speaker from probably 10, 15 minutes ago. Uh, she had a question about the Higera Street Neighborhood Traffic Management Plan. Uh, some of these measures have been implemented already, as she stated back in 2021. Uh, the remaining measures that haven't been implemented are, are currently pending. Um, two major projects in this area, we were waiting to see what was going to happen with the bridge, the Higera Street Bridge, which was constructed a year ago, as well as the Move Culver City Project. Because these two projects will change the traffic patterns and traffic volumes in the area. So upon the completion of the second of these two projects, which is the Move Culver City, uh, in the next few months, we will conduct a traffic volume and a, a traffic speed study in the area to determine whether the remaining measures are still appropriate to be implemented or they need to be tweaked slightly. So that's, that's what's holding up the, the remainder of those measures. Um, with that, I would like to jump into A1. Uh, this item tonight gives, uh, council members, uh, the chance, the opportunity to, uh, discuss this request that we received, uh, as well as give, uh, city staff, um, direction. So we received, um, a request from very, from several, uh, members actually in the community to provide a direct connection between the Bayona Creek Bike and Pedestrian Path up to, um, Ince Boulevard. And, uh, staff researched this request. We looked into it, we analyzed it, and we came up with, uh, three recommendations that we would like to present to council tonight. The first recommendation is to, uh, have a potential new bicycle and pedestrian ramp and pathway connecting Ince Boulevard directly to Bayona Creek. Uh, for the public to reach Ince Boulevard and easement across the private property located at 8680 Hayden Place would, uh, need to be executed. The cost of the easement agreement would be unknown at this point in time, but it would be part of, uh, the negotiations we would embark on with the property owner. The Army Corps of Engineers and the Los Angeles County Department of Public Works would require the city to complete a, a list of pre-application studies and deliverables for a proposed bicycle and pedestrian ramp from the creek up to, um, Ince Boulevard. Upon the completion of, uh, those studies listed on that checklist, the city would submit a formal application for a bicycle and pedestrian ramp project to the creek. And, um, just to let you know, any of the recommendations that we are proposing tonight, this was the first of the three recommendations we have. They require, um, engineering studies. They require, obviously, designing the project itself and obtaining permits from the Army Corps of Engineers and the Los Angeles County Flood Control District. This process will probably take most likely two years. The second option we are presenting tonight is to construct a bridge over Bayona Creek that connects one side to the other. And luckily for us, um, the same property owner owns both properties on the east side and the west side, or the south side and the north side, depending on how you look at the map. But, uh, basically, there's one property owner for, um, both properties on either side of the creek, and this will make it very easy to negotiate with them. Uh, they indicated their, uh, support, strong support for this idea to build a bridge. It would be a shared pedestrian bicycle bridge to connect both sides of the, uh, the creek to one another. And basically, the third, um, option is a hybrid of both. We, we can have a bridge as well as a ramp that comes up from the north side of the bridge to connect to that, um, excuse me, it comes up from the north side of the creek to connect to the bridge, and then they both go together to Ince Boulevard uh, through this, um, private property located at 8680 Hayden Place. And with that, I would like to turn it over to Matt Gaspar to give a few more details. Matt, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Um, the Army Corps of Engineers and LA County Public Works Department, uh, the time, like, um, Mr. Dmitry mentioned, it'll take about two years. Um, the one thing that, um, they have to include in their analysis is that we're right now currently designing the greening of Bayona Creek Bike Path. Um, there are about, I think, 10 trees with wells along the slope. So taking this project into, or potential project into account, this current project and design, plus the ramp at Higera, they need to take all that together and see what kind of hydraulic effect it'll have to the creek. Because of course, for them, most importantly, you don't want to have floodwaters going over on, on private property. So that's something I do want to mention, that they have to take all that into account.
Mayor just concludes our staff report.
Thank you. Are there any, uh, public comments on this item?
Yes, we currently have six people signed up to speak.
Okay, can we hear them and the other colleagues?
I'm going to go ahead and call out all their names. Uh, Donna LeBlanc, Beth Lane, Jim Shanman, Travis Morgan, Michael Hobson, and Kevin Ramirez. All righty. I do not see Donna LeBlanc online or in the council chamber, so I'm going to go to Beth Lane. Beth, you've been unmuted. Go ahead.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, I, I just wanted you to mention that, um, a little bit of what I said earlier regarding the NTMP, Rancho Higera. We feel that this new bike and pedestrian path ramp over to Jefferson Boulevard will possibly bring additional traffic into our adjacent community on Ince Boulevard. Um, I'm sorry, Ince and, from Lucerne into our 10-block community, allowing for, um, people traffic, pedestrians to come in for potential crime. We already have the Higera Bridge, and that was one thing that was kind of pushed back our communities, NTMP, is that we had to wait on the Higera Bridge to open up for them to do an additional traffic, uh, assessment of volume and speed when we already know there's close to 9,000 cut-through car, cars coming from the east side of Higera Bridge into downtown Culver City, cutting right through our community. So this is a concern for a vast majority of our residents in Rancho Higera. As, uh, their Neighborhood Association Board President, I get a lot of emails and comments so, on social media that we've been pushed, we feel that we have been pushed back by the Traffic and Mobility Engineering Department because of Move Culver City. And I was on that committee, the CPAC Committee, so I do know that when Move Culver City came into play, it was after our NTMP, uh, program that was presented to council. As far back as 2016, we started with traffic data analysis. So now, we're in two years for the potential pedestrian bridge and, uh, bike path to get built. That's two years out, and then we have to wait on Move Culver City, which I'm just hearing tonight might happen in a few months, that they come to a resolve on what they're going to do with that. But the neighbors of Rancho Higera feel that we have been overlooked with all these new things coming into play, having nothing to do with the cut-through traffic on Higera or the speed cushions that were originally and initially intended, uh, on Ince Boulevard to cut back on the speed on Ince Boulevard, which is part of this new data analysis for the pedestrian and bike path. We feel that at some point, we want to come back around and circle back to what's happening on Ince and Higera with relation to our small 10-block community, which is very important because we live here. We don't want to always see all these new developments happening around us whereby we feel the pushback or the non, uh, maybe non-essential part of what we've already been talking about and fighting for with city council's, uh, awareness and approval, is to get these things resolved with our cut-through traffic and speeds, the speed, the speed conditions and, and the lack of safety on Ince Boulevard and also still on Higera because of the cut-through traffic. So as they are continuing to add something new, like a pedestrian and bike pathway going over to Jefferson Boulevard, opening up a gateway for additional traffic of people traffic, we would like very much for this to be reconsidered as a no until we are at least considered for our, to be resolved. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jim Shanman.
Good evening, Council. Um, thank you for the time tonight. Um, I love this idea of additional access to the, to the creek path. Um, I think it's fantastic that we've got ownership on both sides of the creek. Um, as we have demonstrated throughout the history of the whole creek, having more access just amplifies the use and, uh, the value of this amazing resource. Um, it also allows it to be safer in general with having more access for, for people and concentrated in certain areas. Um, I, I can't support this enough. Having, having traveled in other cities with other river-style paths, like Kyoto and Paris and, and Cleveland and Tampa Bay, you can see what a river path can actually be. You can, you can see what it's, the potential of it. And we are so far from that kind of potential, and this is such a great step in that direction. So I'm looking forward to, um, seeing this process going forward. Um, it's just another way for families to access the path for getting to and from school without having to go down clogged streets like Overland and Duquesne and other areas like that. So, um, again, looking forward to this process, and I thank you for taking it up. And, um, it'll be exciting to see where it goes. Thank you for the time.
Our next speaker is Travis Morgan. And I could not find Travis on WebEx. We're going to try a different name. Our next speaker will be then Kareem Sali.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. It's an interesting project. You know me, I'm a bike activist. I'm very loud on the topic. Um, first of all, I'm really disappointed by the agenda. There is no information about it, so it was really, it's just two maps. And no, no context around those, uh, two maps. So it was disappointing, and thank you for giving an explanation. Um, I'm in favor of the ramp. I don't think it will bring any crime. I think it's a no-brainer, fine with it. However, the bridge is kind of confusing to me. The bridge that will take the pedestrian and bikers where? On a boulevard that is extremely dangerous, that has no protection whatsoever, and a boulevard where, uh, I believe six or eight bikers died 10 years ago because of a driver who was looking at her phone. So it seems to me that it's more important to prioritize protected infrastructure on Jefferson than to build a bridge. If we do build a bridge, which will be welcome if it's protected, in that case, I want to know who is going to, who the bridge will benefit. Would it be benefit, will it benefit just the residents or a real estate project? My concern is I'm afraid that a real estate person will build a massive parking on Jefferson and just sell it as a way to access the hidden track for their employees. I don't want that. It will be not beneficial for the city. So if some, if there is some, some sort of a project that is attached to it, unofficially, I'd like to know about it. Um, and I'd like to know who will pay for it and how and when. Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Hobson.
Next, we have Michael Hobson. Michael's not in the chambers nor on WebEx. We'll go on to the next speaker. Melissa Sanders. Melissa, you're unmuted. Go ahead.
Thank you. I don't live in the area, so what Beth, I believe her last name, Lane, said about that area, I'm so sorry. I do hope you consider them before moving forward. I really am just more concerned about the fact that our city is in deficit spending, and unless it's an emergency project, I really don't want to be spending any money that we don't absolutely need to spend on a project right now, that, especially anything with bikes, until the whole move lawsuit gets resolved. But in general, can we just not spend millions of dollars or even $100,000 for this and $100,000 for that, until we get our budget resolved, whether it's with grants or other things? We need to look at what we're spending on, and unless it's an emergency, I say we just kind of hold off on it for now, and, you know, put it to the side. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kevin Ramirez, followed by Andrew Leist. We're not seeing Kevin in the chambers nor on WebEx, so we'll call on Andrew Leist. And you are unmuted.
And council members, I'm Andrew Leist, and I support the ideas proposed in A1. They look simple and relatively easy to implement. I recall the council previously discussing that new bike infrastructure might be better away from our larger boulevards. That's probably a topic for another time, but the projects being considered now are a really good example of simple projects on smaller streets that would create additional access to our existing bicycle infrastructure on Biona Creek and Jefferson Boulevard. So I am very excited about these, and I encourage you to support them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That was our final speaker.
Mayor, if I may, I would like to address some of the concerns and comments that came up.
Please do. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Beth Lane had concerns about the additional traffic, both vehicular and pedestrian, that this project, these two projects may bring to the area. We appreciate those concerns, and they will be taken into consideration with whatever measures we decide to implement or suggest or recommend to implement in the future. Mr. Sali had a question about who is the bridge going to be open to, who will have access to the bridge? And the answer is the general public. It's not going to be limited or restricted to just one group or another. If we build a bridge across the creek, it will be open for the benefit of the general public. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Erickson.
Thank you. Well, I think that opening more access to the Biona Creek is something that makes a lot of sense. So I'm supporting us going forward. If we do this in one phase or two phases, that we first look at the ramp and prep it for a bridge, and then we do the bridge, or if we do both projects at the same time, really comes down to how we're going to finance it. I think that ramp, we probably could, with the help from the Baldwin Hills and some other places, we might actually be able to swing that one. The bridge, we probably would need some more serious sponsors to get that done. But I'm for moving forward on this, and want to hear my colleagues, your thoughts on if we should do both, or we start with one and have the other one as a phase two.
Councilmember Vera.
Thank you. Dmitri, thank you, and Matt for the presentation. Just a question. Would it be maybe wise of us to wait till we complete the NTMP in that area for Rancho Higera? You said spring of 2025, it should be the second phase of it, correct?
That's correct.
To really wait and see what the traffic flow is and how it changes before we start discussing ramps and/or bridge, or would that really affect either one of the projects? And then number two, have we done any community buy-in on this? I mean, it's easy for us to say, yeah, let's do it, but if we don't engage with the community that has to deal with it on a daily basis, I think we're doing an injustice to that area.
Let me answer your first question first, council member. We don't have any preference, one way or another, whether this should proceed now with the feasibility study or wait until spring 2025. This is actually the sort of, the type of guidance or direction we're seeking from you tonight, but staff doesn't have preference one way or another.
So it wouldn't, one would not affect the other either way?
No, it wouldn't.
Okay. And then the second part?
Okay, I'm sorry. What was the second part?
Have we, you know, as I said, it's easy for us to say, yeah, we use our great projects, and I-
Oh, yes, public outreach. No, we have not done any public outreach yet because we were still waiting for the green light from-
For the direction.
Exactly, from council.
You know, I said, I think it's a great idea. Okay, one other thing. We have the bridge at Rancho, I mean, at the Higera Street Bridge, is basically doing the same thing as this would do, just a little closer, correct?
Correct.
I say we start with the ramp and then see how that goes. I don't know that, I want to, I know we're in a budget deficit, and I don't know about throwing a whole lot of money on this, if we can find some other funding source, but I think first and foremost, I'd love to do some community outreach, get the neighborhood involved, and see really what their buy-in is, since they're the ones going to have to deal with it 24/7. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Susan.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is an exciting project. As my colleagues have said, I love more connectivity, just maximizing the valuable resource that we have with the creek. I believe if you build it, they will come, and I am glad to hear that we'll be working with the neighbors and taking their feedback into consideration. I think it'll complement all the other networks that we're building in the city, large and small. So I am in favor of this. I would be in favor of doing them both at the same time, but if we're only going to do one, that's fine, but I would be also open to doing both at the same time.
Each one of them has a price tag of $100,000 to put together a feasibility study-
Yep.
-and conceptual designs and so on and so forth. So each one of them is, each idea is-
Would be total would be 200.
Correct.
Yep. Understood. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks so much for the report, Dmitri and Matt. I was the person that requested this be agendized, and, you know, to piggyback off of what Councilmember Erickson said, and I think one of the speakers, you know, myself and many others have said we should really focus on putting safe bike infrastructure in places that aren't on, you know, highly trafficked areas, and that's exactly what this is. The benefits, bringing folks from the south side of Culver City, right into downtown Culver City, more easily, more safely, pedestrians and cyclists, if we had the bridge and the ramp. Also, we're in the process of rezoning the entire city, and that entire stretch of Jefferson is going to be, I believe, assuming we pass it, it's going to be mixed-use residential, going from zero density to medium to high-density residential. And I know that there's voices in the community that want other areas of the city to carry more of the load of density, and something like this, you know, if you're someone who's looking for a place to live, and you can simply just walk across the bridge on the creek, if you've got, you know, housing there, to downtown, that would be incredible. Also, we've got this incredible resource, I don't know, it's maybe 200 feet to the east or northeast, and that's the Baldwin Hill scenic overlook. This would almost connect you directly to that, Park de Playa. It's, I think it's a great opportunity. I do agree that we do need to have, you know, robust community input on this. Saw that we lost like half the people who initially signed up. It's unfortunate. I'm in favor of doing the feasibility study for both potential projects, and that's what they are, is potential projects. I do agree with Beth Lane that their MTMB needs need to be met before this. I know that's not on the agenda tonight, but it would be unfair to make them wait, you know, two, four years, whatever, you know, for this entire project to come to fruition, if it ever does, before they get their needs addressed on Ince. So I think that that should definitely not hold that up, but I would like us to move forward with the feasibility studies on these, and if they are ultimately feasible, then we can deal with the bigger price tag and determine whether or not we can afford to build it, or we can get grant money, or whatever it is. But I'm in favor of both. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Yanni. Staff, for the presentation and all the work to this point, and thanks for all the community members who provided comment on this as well. I would love for us to flag this project with the Smart Growth Cities folks and the folks in the Mayor's Institute of Pedestrian Safety. I think this might be something that they might be interested in and might be able to support us with finding some funding for. I think we have, I mean, I definitely want to move forward with at least examining the feasibility of these. And just to clarify, the feasibility, the $100,000 for each study includes what, rather than answer it for you?
It includes public outreach, it includes putting together concept, conceptual designs, and figuring out what are the permits we need to obtain from the Army Corps of Engineers as well as the Los Angeles County Flood Control District. Those are probably the three main components of the feasibility study.
And just to clarify, the kind of public outreach, what are we talking about? Are we talking about a survey, a community meeting? What does that look like?
Both of the above. We will send out surveys, as well as meet face-to-face with as many people as possible in the area to get their feedback.
Okay, sounds good. Okay.
Mayor.
Anna Mayor.
Oh, well, I'm not done, y'all. Just give me a second. Thanks. It's always wonderful, folks are eager to jump in. So grateful for you clarifying that. How does this project fit into our existing sort of bike and pedestrian plans that we've developed along the years?
This would definitely complement all of our current and future plans.
Okay. And I just, just to clarify, are we thinking about those plans when these kind of things are proposed? Like, is there a priority or a list as to how we sort of examine areas and identify, you know, potential infrastructure projects as it pertains to our set plans that we have?
Well, basically, it comes down to two main criteria, available funding and what the community itself prioritizes. And we find that out by talking to the members of BPAC, as well as the emails and phone calls we constantly receive from our community.
No, they're calling you too?
They do.
I'm glad. I thought it was just us up here, so I'm glad you get them too. All right, sounds good. Thank you so much for providing a bit more information and including some drafts and clarifying responses to my questions. We'll go first to the Vice Mayor and then to Councilmember Erickson. Thank you so much.
Actually, can I have Councilmember Erickson?
Oh, okay.
Well, I have to follow-up question to the mayor's question about what was included, and I didn't hear you say that we also needed to, in that study, have discussions with the property owner. I assume-
Yeah, that's actually mentioned in the staff report. So negotiating with the property owners is part of the feasibility study.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
I apologize, I listed three of the four things I should have listed.
It's not a test, it's okay. I heard you say it earlier. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
If everyone's done providing comment, I'd like to present a motion.
Please do.
Yeah. One question.
One other question, sorry. Dmitri, just for clarification, both, either project is $100,000. Is it necessary to do both concurrently, or can you do the one, get community buy-in, say the ramps, and then figure out from there what the, what the buy-in is, what the scope of what we need to do for the community, and then go with the second one?
Yes, we don't have to pursue both ideas at the same time. We don't have to. We can pick one or the other. As I stated earlier, part of the reason why we're presenting this item tonight is to get this sort of direction from council.
Okay. I mean, it might behoove us to save $100,000, and I mean, not to say that I want to exclude the bridge altogether, but get the ramp going, get community buy-in, and see what the community likes. I understand the Vice Mayor's idea about, you know, and it is a great tool to connect Jefferson over, but I think maybe do one at a time. Either way, whatever, council, I support the idea. Either way, I'm just thinking about ways to save money if the bridge doesn't fit into the community's sort of ideas of what it should be like. Thanks. Vice Mayor's all yours.
And, well, really quick, Director Yanni, can you just explain what a potential timeline would look like for both of these?
Each one of them will probably take two years to actually implement.
Right, but for the actual feasibility studies, if they're redone concurrently, one after the other, what kind of timeline are we thinking about?
Six months.
Six months, even, both together?
Yes.
Okay. Nice, Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, thinking about what Matt said, that we have to consider the impacts to another project that we have. If we put ramps in, I think it, I think it seems to me it makes sense to look at both of the, both the bridge and the ramp at the same time for kind of the same reason. If you're building a ramp and not considering the potential of adding a bridge, I mean, it just makes sense to me, you know, we might have to backwards engineer something later on if we're not considering them in whole. That's the way I feel. So I want to move forward with recommending, so my motion is to approve a feasibility study for both an access ramp to Biona Creek from Ince Boulevard, as well as a bridge connecting Ince Boulevard to Jefferson Boulevard.
And you don't have computer access, right?
I do not.
Okay. I'll press it for you. City Council, I'm pressing it for him.
I can make it manually, so I can-
Okay, sounds good. I'm happy to second it then, if you deny it, you get a second.
I have a motion by Councilmember O'Brien, seconded by Mayor McMORAN.
Vice Mayor O'Brien.
Vice Mayor O'Brien, thank you.
It's okay.
All right, just want to get it right for the record.
You may begin voting.
Aye.
Vice Mayor, thank you. Thank you. That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you so much. A two.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor, members of council. Janine Houchin, Equity Analyst, to present to you this item.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. As part of the continuing effort to stand united against hate through community education, item A two seeks to further our city's commitment to standing up against hate with the city council's consideration of the following. The first would be the designation of September 21st through September 27th as Culver City United Against Hate Week as part of the Nationwide United Against Hate Week Initiative. The second would be designation of this Culver City United Against Hate Week as a city-sponsored campaign. The third would be authorization to the city manager to administratively approve agreements, permits, and licenses needed for implementation as deemed appropriate for this campaign to promote anti-hate awareness and to reinforce the message of unity against hate and hate crimes within the Culver City community. And a four-fifths vote requirement, approval of a related budget amendment appropriating $17,000 from the general fund unassigned fund balance to cover city costs. L.A. versus hate is a community-centered system designed to support all residents and communities by addressing the normalization of hate and inspiring people to stand up against, stand up to it, and building understanding about what constitutes a hate act and how to report it, and supporting individuals and communities as they heal from the trauma of hate. United Against Hate Week emerged from a United Against Hate poster campaign created by Bay Area cities in response to white supremacist rallies in Berkeley and San Francisco in 2017. It is now spread to over 200 communities, including all of Los Angeles County, faith-based groups, LGBTQIA+ communities, and human rights organizations throughout California and across the United States. Next slide. Culver City, through a combined effort with the Equity and Human Relations Advisory Committee, has built upon and continued its commitment towards educating our community about hate and how to combat it over the last year by providing trainings, events, and activities designed to help our community members safely and effectively reject hate and acts of hate in our city. These trainings were the bystander intervention training for the workplace hosted for employees in June of 2024, bystander intervention training for public spaces hosted in June of 2024 as well, 2022 Hate Crimes Report presented by the L.A. County Commission on Human Relations in May of 2024, the Courageous Conversations Event hosted by ERAC in conjunction with Bridges Interrelations Consulting in March 2024, situational awareness training for the staff in January of 2024, and the United Against Hate Week Campaign last November in 2023. Next slide. In recognition of the ever-increasing rate and severity of hate crimes across Los Angeles County, during Culver City United Against Hate Week, with city council approval, the city will continue its mission to help our community members gather the knowledge, tools, and confidence they need to safely and effectively stand united against hate through the following means. The city will reinforce the importance of reporting hate crimes through the utilization of 211 through a multifaceted media campaign. And new this year, the city would like to host two free public learning sessions to build upon knowledge imparted at the original bystander intervention training for public spaces in June. These trainings will include a mitigating implicit bias training and a bystander intervention 2.0 conflict de-escalation training, each facilitated by an outside organization to provide our community members with even more tools and options to safely and effectively combat hate. By empowering our residents and providing the appropriate resources, tools, and knowledge, together, we can alter the course of hate. Thank you for your time and consideration this evening. Dana Anderson, Human Resources Director, Michelle Hamilton, and myself are available to answer any questions you may have on this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any public comments on this item? Let me hear those.
We have approximately 40 speakers signed up.
Okay, 90 seconds.
And we'll call, in a list of 10, we have Hala Khan, Maria Beg, Huang Naim Elbek, Lisa Schultz, Fawaz Iztwani, Emily Dimbidi, Thea Krizmanic, Shaheen Nassar, and Pitango Trautush. I think a lot of them are gone already. I would like for the anti-hate campaign language, it should include anti-Palestinian derogatory terms, language, and an apology from the city council member that chose to make the divisive, a divisive comment that's causing hate in the community. Also, it should protect the residents that are being doxxed in the community currently in California. It's illegal to use people's names and expose where they work because of their political beliefs. But some vicious residents that take photos and post them on social media about individuals, a lot of them support your campaigns. And I am 100% sure you don't want that to, that vile behavior in your names. I would also like to ask a film screening of the documentary, The Stones Cry Out. It's a documentary that kind of includes the history of what happened to my family, the burning of the villages of my family's olive land. That's educational, that can be included about hate that we are all talking about. Is that possible? Mayor Yasmin, can I get an, a meeting with you? Or Dr. or Mr. Albert Vera, can I get a meeting with you since you also have olive land and you understand what olive land is like to be an owner of an olive land?
I'd be willing to sit down with you anytime, absolutely.
Okay, I would love that. Thank you so much. Maria Beg.
Hi, my name is Maria. I'm a Culver City resident and a mother of two. I am the current president of the Muslim Bar Association. I am an active member of the Muslim community in Culver City. I go to the King Fahad Mosque. And while I support Anti-Hate Week, I can't help but wonder, who is Anti-Week hate meant to protect? Is it meant to protect me? Is it meant to protect my family? Is it meant to protect the Palestinian community in Culver City? The Arab community in Culver City? The Muslim community in Culver City? I have two biracial children, and I fear for what will happen to them when there is constant hate within our communities. There is hate within Culver City. And with all due respect to this council, you are fuming that hate. Your statement on October 23rd, specifically in Section 6, says that you don't stand for antisemitism. Nowhere in there did it say anti-Muslim hate, anti-Arab hate, anti-Palestinian hate. Your comments and your lack of action is fueling hate. It is fueling hate within this community, and it is fueling hate within a community that I live in. I'm a new Culver City resident. I've lived in Palms for the past 10 years. I recently purchased a house on the other side of Veterans Memorial. And I don't know how I feel about my children going to a Culver City school when there has been anti-hate and anti-Muslim hate within this community. And so again, while I support an anti-hate initiative, I really ask this council to think about, who are you trying to protect?
Lisa Schultz. I apologize. Huang Nien Elbek.
Hello, Mayor McMaurin and councilmembers. I appreciate hearing about the racial equity plan. It's something that we would appreciate in our school district as well. We've been working on that. Our former President, Trump, he related the COVID pandemic to a China virus, and it didn't take long for the anti-immigrant sentiment to hit hard on the Asian community. We had a horrific hate crime against an Asian woman in 2021. And if the equity, some of the research could be directed to a culturally sensitive survey. I, a lot of the events are amazing. I, I wish I could attend them. Some of the book clubs that are happening are amazing, but an older Asian community may not respond. The most, the families just don't want to rock the boat in a place that is so safe as Culver City. So if to consider the culturally appropriate or language appropriate for Asians, that would be great. And the reason why I bring that up is because on October 23rd, when the leadership wrote a statement, that can trigger hate against other groups as well. Changes can be made, I think. Things have changed so much since then, it'd be nice to maybe look at that again if there's some changes can be made.
Our next speaker is Lisa Schultz. Lisa is not in the chambers, and she's not on WebEx. We'll go on to the next speaker.
Hello again. We have been facing a lot of hate toward our business. People are bombing us with bad reviews, I guess, in one way, trying to take down our business because we're pro Hamas. That's one form of hate. The other form of hate is one of your supporters, Mr. Vera, she's claiming, she's giving Booba a bad rap about, about calling code pink. So she needs to have a little talk with. She's also saying we're pro Hamas and going on chat rooms and giving lies and telling people when people are leaving and coming to our place with the scarves. I mean, imagine if I told people, hey, there's people with yarmulkes coming up, that wouldn't be right. So yeah, we need to address it. And yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad what she said about the anti-Muslim. It's, it's getting hot. We need to tone it down in the city. So I hope we get to hear from you guys regarding that. Thank you so much.
Okay, our next speaker is Thea Krizmanic. I do not see Nassar on WebEx. Okay, we'll move on to Ron Ostrin. I do not see Mr. Ostrin on WebEx.
Hi, thanks. Who could be against a hate week? My goodness. Like apple pie and motherhood. That's wonderful. I wonder if it really means anything. I spent a lot of years in, in Mississippi in the 1960s, the early 70s, working in the civil rights movement. And I can remember the frequency in which council chambers passed resolutions condemning hate. And it didn't mean much because they didn't exactly define what hate meant. Well, we know what hate means. We heard it earlier this evening. The only way that this particular hate week is going to matter is if you take seriously what you heard tonight about how people feel that they are hated. And the best way to do that is to include in your, in your hate week, a serious discussion of why we can't agendize a ceasefire resolution to stop the hate that is spewing out, personified, exemplified, the killing of all those children. Make your hate week matter.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Thank you so much. Appreciate your comments.
I will call the next 10 speakers listed, and they are Ivanska Pagan, Joan Sackler, Connor Profit, Claudia Wiza, Ryan Williani, Camila Huntley, Daniel Nickfargem, Samantha Mohammed, Salma Ibrahim, and Tazneem Noor.
Respect the leader and council. Hate. I didn't grow up with hate, but during these times, I have seen the hate like never before around us. And there's hate that you, you can't even see. It's just because you are not with the, you see people with their US flag next to them, or you must hate the other group. And it can all be like that. Because I am Puerto Rican, and I carry my Puerto Rican flag too. And it does not mean that I don't love US or the US government. It's just that they're supporting a hate. And I'm supposed to hate whoever doesn't go with the US is supporting right now. And everybody should be included in this group. Like when we go to the universities and the boycotts, the, I could clearly see that the hate was towards anybody who did not have the US flag, when that wasn't the point. The point is, is a minority that is being ignored. And if Puerto Rico had resisted, we would have been ignored too. But of course, we're going with the same, the same movement as the United States.
Good evening, City Council.
Good evening, City Council. I've come here tonight to speak on the action item for Culver City United Against Hate Week. I, I wonder what, what hate is and how Culver City defines hate, how it perceives it. Is, is hate an individual atomized thing? Do people just hate one another? Are we born with hate in our hearts for another? I think the answer is no. I think we need the systematic causes of hate. What causes, you know, a kid to go spray paint something awful on a school? Or what causes someone to murder someone else? But I think we need to address more systematically hate. And I think that I have a reading from the Reverend Doctor that I think speaks to a more systematic issue. I must make two honest confessions to you, my Christian and Jewish brothers. First, I must confess that over the past few years, I've been gravely disappointed with the white moderate. I have almost reached the regrettable conclusion that the Negro's great stumbling block in his stride toward freedom is not the white citizens counselor or the Ku Klux Klaner, but the white moderate who is more devoted to order than to justice, who prefers a negative piece, which is the absence of tension, to a positive piece, which is the presence of justice, who constantly says, I agree with you and the goal you seek, but I cannot agree with your methods of direct action, who paternalistically believes he can set the timetable for another man's freedom, who lives by a mythical concept of time, and who constantly advises the Negro to wait for a more convenient season. Shallow misunderstanding, shallow understanding from people of good will is more frustrating than absolute misunderstanding from people with ill will. Lukewarm acceptance is much more bewildering than outright rejection. Thank you.
Claudia Huisa. I don't see Claudia in the chambers nor on WebEx. We'll move on to Ryan Willianni. Brian is also not on WebEx. Camila Huntley. Next, Daniel Nickfargem. Samantha Mohammed.
Hello again and good evening. Thank you for letting us speak with you today. Again, my name is Samantha Mohammed. I'm a resident of Culver City and I've seen many different forms of hate since moving here. Some such as the hate that has been progressively pushed against unhoused populations who are already marginalized people. But what I'm coming today to specifically speak about is as a Palestinian American, I've seen hate towards my community and towards other Muslim communities while being here. I've seen caricatures labeling all Palestinians as terrorists on my, you know, daily walking my dog around Carlson Park. I've seen all of the hate being thrown towards one of the community staples, which is Jackson Market. And there's just many different instances of hate. From this, I just wanted to say I'm grateful that we live in such an amazing city where we're taking the time to advocate for a week against hate. That's wonderful. But we want to make sure that it's more than just checking a box. We want to make sure that we're actually advocating for some kind of change, for bringing people together to have conversations. So my only concern with this is what does this actually mean? What will it look like? What's the agenda? And how do we make sure that the people who are running this week are doing something that will move change forward? That will have a diverse representation of people who decide what gets, what events get held? Someone had mentioned documentary screening. There's so many different things that can be held. We want to make sure that everyone has equal opportunity to express themselves and to make sure that hate, again, is abolished. We work as a community against that. So my ask is more to make sure that we're addressing it as a whole. Thank you.
Thelma Ibrahim. Tazneem Noor. Neither are in the chambers nor on WebEx. I'm going to call the next 10 speakers, and they are Frances Rosenau, Melissa Sanders, Jasmine Delgado, Haifa Mamar, Mirvet Jude, Angelina Chichini, and Gloria Cohen.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council members. My name is Frances Rosenau. I'm a Culver City resident, parent, and faith leader. I'm so glad to see Resolution A2 on a United Against Hate Week, joining other communities doing the same, because it is time to raise our voices as a community. I stand here as a leader in the Christian religion, and I'm compelled to speak today because of the hate and violence that has been done in the name of my religion. The history of Christianity is rife with persecution and violence. We know the history all too well. After all, what, many, many times, people have religion, use religion to perpetuate the violence that they already wanted to enact, whether it be because of reasons of power or, or fear. But also the hate that goes on more recently. What symbol did the KKK burn? Was the cross. And it's not all in the past, as hate continues to be perpetrated in the name of Christianity, especially against our LGBTQIA+ siblings. And I invite you for this week to please call on me to help get faith congregations involved. We are willing to be a part of this. We are a city for everyone. We are, I myself, I'm a person of faith, not of fear, of hope, not of despair, and of love, not of hate. That's who God has called me to be, and it's through unity, love, and peace that is always the answer, and that will lead us onward together. Thank you.
Next, we have Melissa Sanders.
Hi again. I think you guys might need more than a week, number one. Number two, I would like to request that this be done with the Culver City School District to include not only the school board members, since we have an apparently antisemitic school board president at the moment, is not great for those of us who are, were, you know, worried and feeling the hate there. But everyone's been talking about the kids, and it starts with the children. If we can teach them at a very young age that you don't hate based on color or race or who you love, or what religion you practice, or any of that, is, that's where the importance becomes. So I suggest this become not just citywide, but include our schools, and perhaps we can get the next generation to, you know, live a better life and be able to really see each other for just as human beings and not hate people for some random reason. I will let you know that I was sent a message by someone who was in the chamber this evening. And they said, after Brian spoke, there were a couple of guys who yelled, we love you, we love Jews. Then one of them said, as long as they are dead. So I urge you to think about when we are concerned about Code Pink and this violent organization being called by people in our own city to come speak to you and beg of you something, think about what the other reasons are behind that. And if this is about no hate, then do no hate. Thank you.
Jasmine Delgado, followed by Haifa Mamar, Mirvet Jude, Angelina Chichini, and Gloria Cohen. I don't see Jasmine on WebEx. Next, we have Haifa Mamar. Okay, we'll move on to Mirvet. And she's on WebEx.
Hello?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, so I'm pleased upon you. Thank you so much for the opportunity. I think it's great that the Culver City Council has decided to do a Hate Week or Anti-Hate Week. However, what I'm, my concern is that defining that, you just had somebody right now who just talked about the conflation of Zionism and antisemitism, which is very dangerous for the Jewish community. Also, there are anti-Arab, anti-Muslim, and anti-Palestinian hate has increased by 300% in the past 10 months. That is something really important. Yes, it's true. Businesses get targeted. Yes, it's true. People in different professions have been doxxed for either being Palestinian or being pro-Palestinian or appearing as Palestinian or Muslim. So I think that in your plan, you do have to be inclusive, as many of the residents have indicated, in order to truly, you know, set an example and counteract hate. And I think including the schools and, and making, and having conversations regarding antisemitism, anti-Palestinian, anti-Arab, anti-Muslim hate, you know, homophobia and Islamophobia is really important, and any other form of hate. And what a great way of starting that week, if you pass the ceasefire resolution. Could you imagine that? How incredible that would be for you to say, take a stand against genocide. I think that is the biggest way you could start showing that hate isn't okay. Thank you so much for your time.
And next, we have Angelina Chichini, who's not on WebEx. So we'll move on to Gloria Cohen. And our remaining two speakers are Ray Lopp and Gary Sees. Okay, we do not have Ray. We'll call on our next speaker, Gary Sees.
Hello? Have you heard?
Gary, you are unmuted. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm in complete support of this measure. However, maybe it doesn't go far enough. A focus week on hate, when there's so much of it around, probably needs to be every day. And the other thing I believe strongly is that we, if we each sit in our respective camps and talk about how we shouldn't hate each other, not much is going to change. I think part of this effort should be to create continuous dialogue between people who live in, in their own communities and tend not to venture out of them. That's the only way this is going to change over time. That being said, we can't really forget what happened at our universities, you know, in Los Angeles and New York over the past few months. There were plenty, plenty, plenty of occurrences of hatred on both sides. And that's one of the main reasons I was, I'm against the resolution with regard to Gaza. It's just going to further engender that. The city shouldn't pick sides. It should encourage a dialogue between people. It can lead that dialogue. And with that, as a community, maybe we can have a response that's worthwhile. However, throw, picking one side or another in this thing, one side's going to win, one side's going to lose, and that hate is just going to continue to simmer. So please, don't pick sides. Create a dialogue. That's much more important to the long term. Thank you.
Thank you. Lastly, we have Nicholas Connor.
Good evening, Council members. Thank you for your time tonight, and this is my first time ever speaking at a city council, so I'm a little shaky, but I'm going to do my best. And thank you to the police. They put a lot of effort into tonight, and I'm grateful that it was a peaceful night. I have lived in Culver City well over 20 years. I've worked here as long. I helped operate Jackson Market. And we've been receiving a lot of hate messages since we started speaking up for Palestinian people and against the war. I think after hearing everything tonight, it just shows me more that we need your leadership. We need you guys to help bring together Jewish voices and Palestinian voices and anybody else that just wants to see an end to this violence, but we need to be able to just talk about it, period. I can't say ceasefire without being called antisemitic. Can't say leave if they support Hamas. We fly the flag of Palestine because it's related to our family, and we want to show support for the innocent people. It's not a flag of a terrorist organization. It's a flag of a people. And I'm afraid that all of these things are being redefined. And we should be able to wear a kafiyah, not be called antisemitic. We should be able to wear a yarmulke, not be called Islamophobic. You guys, you wrote a resolution in October 23rd.
Mr. Connor, your time is expired.
I think it's incomplete. I think you need to revisit it, please, and bring everyone into it. And so tonight, I'm going to turn this in to you guys.
Thank you so much.
I know we're going to email it to you and ask
Thank you so much for your time. That was the final speaker, City Clerk.
That was our final speaker for item A2.
Thank you. Start discussion, Councilmember Viera. Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, thanks for all the speakers for sticking around so, so late at night and going through, through all of this. I support this, but I do agree with any of the speakers, especially Fawaz, in terms of really making sure that everybody's included in this conversation. When we have conversation and aren't truly as inclusive as we can, and more importantly, listening to the, to the community, I don't ever want to leave anybody out of a conversation. So moving forward to this, I know one of the, and thank you for the paperwork, by the way, I'll, I'll take a read at it later on. But making sure that we do extensive outreach, especially to those who have reached out to us today, fold you into the conversation, and see how we can be as inclusive as possible in, in the language. So thank you again all. And, well, I'll make my comments later on, but I want to talk with you, Fawaz, about how we can bring this community together. I'd love to sit and chat with you maybe next week and let you understand where I'm coming from, some of my thoughts, and seeing what your community thinks about that and how we can move forward collectively, where we don't pick sides, where we don't blame each other, where we have mutual goals that we can achieve. And I think everything is possible through conversation. So I'll be reaching out with you, and maybe we can get together sometime next week. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
All right, Ericson.
Well, thank you. And thank your staff for putting this together. It's, it's a good development from last year. I think we're getting, you know, more, more inclusive and better at this. And I think it's, the timing is obviously needed, and, and we heard from several speakers talking about we need more dialogue, right? So I think Gary Sees and Nicholas Connor in this last session here, both mentioned that we need dialogue. And I think this is part of establishing that and getting going with that. So I'm supporting all your suggestions here, and, and I really appreciate your efforts in moving this item forward to a more extensive program than last year. Thank you.
Councilmember Thursday.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, and thanks to staff for this report and your work on it, and thanks to the public comments for your vulnerability in the motion. In June of this year, In June of this year, Attorney General Rob Bonta released the 2023 Hate Crimes Report. And overall, reported hate crimes events in California did decrease by 7.1%. But however, reported hate crimes against LGBTQ+ Jewish and Muslim communities have increased, and anti-black bias events remain the most prevalent, even though it also experienced a decrease in 2023. Culver City just had an incident in one of our schools where two youths repainted homophobic and racist comments on the site and broke some windows. So this is unacceptable. I'm going to inspire the people who stayed focused on standing up to that. LA versus Hate, which is kind of the mothership of this, also has trainings for this in different languages. So if people are interested, I have information about that, open to helping organize some of those trainings. At that event, Supervisor Hallie J. Mitchell said that no one is born hating and that it's learned, and there's no place for hate in our community. So I do think it's essential for us to model authentic dialogue in Culver City and practice calling people in rather than calling people out. I just want to thank our Human Relations Department in Iraq for their work in helping to foster this type of environment in Culver City. It takes a lot of time and energy and intentionality. And this program will be another small step in a direction towards greater understanding. And these trainings are important because we need to learn how to talk about gender, gender identity, race, ability issues, antisemitism, Islamophobia, anti-Muslim, anti-Arab issues. I used to be an implicit bias trainer. At my day job, we all have implicit bias. It's, in fact, it's how our species survived. We obviously have evolved, and we've become more sophisticated in some ways. And we all have bias, so it's really liberating to understand that and learn to mitigate it rather than wasting time and pretending that we don't have it. And there's also bystander training and conflict escalation. So I really support this item. I think the better educated we are, the more dialogue we have, the better. So I'm in support of this item. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Big night. Thank you, staff, for putting this together and the thoughtfulness there. And obviously, hearing from our community members, you know, we can always do better. I wrote down some comments from folks. I know we're voting on a budget here. Whether or not there's an opportunity to fit, well, I would imagine we'd have to first watch the movie, The Stones Will Cry Out, to be sure it works for the week. But if there's an opportunity to at least uplift that documentary, if it's appropriate, I think that would be good. Ms. Begg mentioned the lack of language about anti-Arab, anti-Muslim, hate. And then Ms. Albeck afterwards, my neighbor, you know, mentioned the rise in Asian hate. And we can, as Councilmember Puzza mentioned, you know, we can go across the board. So, and that's always the trick, is, you know, including everyone. And, you know, we all even accidentally find ourselves forgetting to thank someone or forgetting to acknowledge someone. And it's important to do that here. I know that Mr. Davis and, you know, mentioned how you define hate. And Connor and Mervette kind of got into, you know, what causes hate. And I think tonight, with some people and emails that we've all received, probably around 3,000 emails on this topic. A lot of it, you know, I think you can probably say it's all because of fear. I heard it tonight from folks, you know, are either supportive of the ceasefire or are Jewish or of the Muslim faith. And it's that fear. And I heard several of you use this word, but I sensed it, is that, you know, this hate week, is it performative? That's kind of what I was getting from several of you. And oftentimes, we do these kinds of efforts, and it's the same people that turn out for them that are supportive of the effort. But are we, you know, are the people that are coming to them, you know, the ones that need it the most? Nicholas, I really, I know how hard, I saw earlier, you were, in the first round, you were kind of being cajoled to go up and speak, and you weren't comfortable, and I sensed that here. So thank you for, you know, making yourself vulnerable and going through that. I know that was hard. I hope that there's a way that we can bring people in this discussion and others that have fear of the other person or the other group in the same room. I know that Jackson Market's been the target of a lot of this, and I'm sorry for you. And for those who feel that that is in the hearts of, you know, all of you, I don't feel that. Maybe Jackson Market could be, after a conversation with Councilmember Rivera, I'm happy to be a part of that as well, can be a source of healing, bringing people together that, you know, are in this room and, you know, saying ugly words. But as far as, you know, this agenda item, I hope that, you know, I know our staff is going to work their hardest to make this as impactful as possible and not performative. So I'm very supportive of this. And the trick is, maybe at every one of our council meetings, taking down names of folks who are, you know, feeling afraid and reaching out to them and saying, hey, why don't you join us in this? Because I know that we will have, you know, people out for this week and speaking, and there are all the people that are supportive of this. But we also need to get people into it that need a little buy-in as well, because those are the ones that are impacted directly and are also projecting that onto others. So I hope we can bring those folks in the room as well. Thanks.
All right. It is a little late, so I'll try to be brief. Thank you, staff, for bringing this item. Thank you to our community members for your comments this evening. This is by far one of our most engaged meetings that I can recall in recent, since I've been a council member. I'm very grateful for that. I started out this year really thinking about how we could support our community, knowing, you know, just the overall climate, knowing some of the concerns that folks have on a local level as well. I'm not sure where we are on the interfaith space, but I know we did get support on that, so I hope that we will have a path forward on that shortly. I'm really grateful that we were able to lead an Equity Subcommittee on United Against Hate Week in 2023. Very grateful for the leadership of LA County Executive Director Rob Intoma. It's my understanding he was at the press conference last week at the school district site to affirm our commitment to being against hate in Culver City. I'm very grateful for all that the county does and our human relations commissioners on the county level do to support the entire county, as well as us in the second district and in Culver City. Very grateful to our Equity and Human Relations Committee that has a very heavy, heavy workload and working to meet the needs of our community. I know last year, I think we just had like merch, for lack of a better word, but it was our first year, and I think we learned about the week, I don't want to say a little later, but we didn't have time to like stand up specific trainings. But I'm really proud to see this list on page two of the staff report of bystander intervention trainings, hate crime report, courageous conversation, situational awareness training, et cetera, et cetera. We are moving in the right direction. I know it's really difficult. Everything takes so much longer than you think. So I'm very grateful to see the advancements made, and I'm hopeful this will be a unanimous approval this evening. The only other thing I'd like to lift up in this space, I know we do have a website. I know it's not just United Against Hate, but it's like a wider equity and inclusion in Culver City. I wonder, to the point about resources and education and movies, because I know that it's just a week. I know we were thinking about a movie, but we might not have the resources or capacity to put on something like that. Might it be possible for us to have a space on the website for either Culver City recommended resources and/or a place for community members to recommend specific podcasts, books, events, websites, whatever, you know, with a link to why they're submitting it, why, you know, and maybe with their neighborhood or something, you know, so it's a little personal touch. I think that could be a way that doesn't hopefully put you too much on staff, but it allows for us to kind of create a, I mean, we already have a space. But create, in addition to that space, that allows for all of our communities to be, you know, hey, I just posted this, you know, whatever podcast, or hey, I submitted this, if folks think that it will help us on this journey to truly be united against hate. And the other piece to just lift up, you know, we are, you know, history is history. We know, you know, you don't have to look further than our current presidential, you know, and the things that our candidates are saying, right? To know that hate is here, that, you know, to the Vice Mayor's point, a lot of it is rooted in fear and uncertainty and a lot of unknowns and a lot of zero sum, which has been long the history in this country. But again, in Culver City, I do believe that we are, at least we're trying, trying to make steps toward, turning toward one another, really creating community belonging. And I'm glad to see, and again, I hope this is a unanimous vote, that there are going to be some resources behind this so that we can really start, because again, those budgets are always value documents. So we'd really love to see a unanimous vote for this this evening. And yeah, I think, thank you for, staff, for all of your work in making this happen. Y'all have not only HR but equity work. Thank you for taking it seriously. And thank you for presenting these engagements for us to be a part of. And if there's a way that we can link the county offerings as well, because I know there'll be some synergies with the county efforts, although the county is so big, so, but if there are some that are nearby, it'd be great to flag those.
Also, someone mentioned making sure they were kind of coordinated with the school district, at least.
That might be more difficult this year, because it's next month, right? So when is our next education sub? That might be something to look for.
So we do have an upcoming race relations event on September 17th that involves the school district.
Oh, great. Wonderful timing.
So that is coming up, as well as the other additional items listed. We did just, we're talking about how we can enhance the website to kind of be more informative and list more resources. And yes, thank you for acknowledging one of the initiatives that we did try to bring forward, which we work with the Ad-Hoc Equity Committee on these things, where we did try to do a screening, but there were issues with licensing and stuff. So that didn't come to fruition. But we do have other community-related events presented. So yes, this is great. And, you know, I want to thank my team because they did work really hard on trying to be creative and create community-related events that we can involve the community to raise this initiative and just to support for the Hate Crimes Report. You know, this is also our second year that we've brought that to the city, where it is educational for the community as far as the crimes, the hate crimes against, you know, antisemitism, Muslim, LGBTQ, gender. It goes over all of them, as well as specific hate crimes reported for our Culver City. So very, very educational, and we try to enhance that, but then also provide resources on how we can address it in the community safely. So I did want to uplift that and thank City Council for your support.
Thank you so much. And hopefully, Vice Mayor, in the next CCUSD City Council meeting, we can agendize a more formalized discussion. I don't know when our next meeting is, but we'll put a pin in that to discuss shortly. With that being said, can we have a motion for the approval of the designation of September 21st? Wait a minute, this is not written correctly on my staff report, but that's okay. September 18th to September 21st to Culver City United Against Hate Week designate CC United Against Hate Week as a city-sponsored campaign. We are authorizing the city manager to administratively approve agreements, permits, licenses needed to implement this campaign in order to promote hate crime reporting to 211, awareness and the message of unity against hate and hate crimes within the Culver City community, and an approval of a budget amendment appropriating $17,000 from the general fund to the account, which is designated in the staff report.
One update, the date is September 21st through the 27th.
Oh, well, see, I just, it says 21st to the 18th. So I said it must be the 18th, so, all right. It's just, but yes, let's amend the date. Thank you so much.
Yes.
Thank you. I see a motion by Councilmember Puzza. Waiting for a second.
A second, did it?
I think Councilmember Vera's second.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I made this second, but it's not showing up on the screen.
It was me. It's fine, though.
I saw it populate. I don't know what happened.
I clicked the button, but it's fine. Not a big deal.
So I have a motion by Councilmember Puzza, seconded by Councilmember Vera. And you may begin voting. Councilmember O'Brien?
All right.
Thank you. My motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment for items not on the agenda?
Yes, we have one speaker, Denise Neal.
Okay, Ms. Neal.
Councilmembers and community at large, thank you for providing a forum for this discussion, this dialogue tonight. I'd like to know how we can incorporate that into our upcoming preparation for not only the Olympics, but the other events coming, like FIFA World Cup and the others all in between from 2026 to 2028. I'd like to know if there's a way for Iraq and the DEI people and just our communities in conflict to try to find a little unity and participation in trying to prepare for all these events. They can probably be something to mend ties and maybe mend some broken and burnt bridges. Maybe we can find some ways for us to create some inner group understanding in our preparation on the road to the Olympics, because we're all going to be here. The whole world's going to be here. And these issues... and these issues are not going to go away. With that being said, I also would like to know what the status of the FBA reparations is, because we need a way to participate in all of this preparation as well. And we do face a lot of obstacles and hatred. So I'd like to know if we're going to have some community dialogue on how we can put these pieces together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Neal. I'm just going to add, just because we had a conversation earlier. I think we're in the process, Ms. Neal, you weren't here yet, but we're in the process of doing a racial equity action plan. And I think the reparations conversation will finish or pick back up after we finish with the plan. That's my understanding, based on where we are. And if you want to watch the presentation back, feel free to culvercity.org/agents to see the presentation from Dr. Blank, I don't know her name now. She was great, from the Keen Research Institute. Blank, I don't know her name. Lots of notes. Keen Independent Research, Dr. Nicole Yates. Yeah, there we go. Yeah, absolutely. Okay, any items from members? Councilmember Vera?
Yes, I'd like to, item for adjournment. I don't know, are you going to do that now, or?
I have a couple for adjournments, so I'll circle back to you.
Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Erickson?
No.
Councilmember Puza?
No.
Vice Mayor O'Brien?
Yeah, there's a couple thing, a couple requests. Mr. Noel Brahm requested that we agendize potential sponsorship of the Michel Film Festival. It's in October.
Yes.
So I'd like to agendize that. I think it's three nodding heads.
Seeing nodding heads from Councilmember Vera, Councilmember Puza, Vice Mayor O'Brien, and Mayor McMorn, and Councilmember Erickson.
And then, I do think we need to have a conversation about how the city could maybe help coordinate, I don't know if this is in our purview, but regarding the retrofit, there's, if we can choose some preferred vendors, I don't know if that's acceptable, that, so that, you know, they can get some economies of scale to do something like this. I know it's, I know, I, you know, on my own home, I can't afford to replace my roof right now. And I can imagine what this is like for them. So anything that we can do to help reduce those costs for them by bundling, whatever it might be, I'd like a discussion on that.
May I add something there?
Okay.
I think there was a few questions that come up, right? So what's the retrofit, retrofit support that you mentioned? But there is also the issue about retrofit grants, how that would work and what it might be. And then the question also about how the pass-through will work. So if that can be added, and staff can come back with, you know, a little more deep explanation for how it currently looks, and then we can, you know, take a discussion about it.
Thank you. I'm seeing nodding heads from Councilmember Erickson, Councilmember Vera, and Vice Mayor O'Brien. That's it from you, Vice Mayor?
That's it. Yeah, thank you.
No worries. I have three quick ones before we do adjournment and memory. Can we agendize a conversation or an examination of sort of the hot zones from where our, like, most common PD calls are coming from? I'm interested in how we look at that data and how we utilize it and where our hot zones or hotspots are as it pertains to crime in Culver City. It's just something I know everyone on this side cares deeply about. So it'll probably be a presentation diving into the data that's probably already collected in our quarterly reports, where we can get some clarity about where those zones are from the police department, and then potentially have a plan of action about, about those, those areas, those zones.
Seeing nodding heads from Councilmember Puza, Vice Mayor O'Brien, and Mayor McMorn.
Okay, thank you. I have a quick question, because I'm not sure. Are there lactation spaces at the city, at the city in this complex or in other city spaces?
I don't, I don't believe so. I'm not aware of it. I think HR would know, but it looks like they've left. But I haven't heard of that.
Can we agendize a conversation about that? And if other cities have a designated space for that need, should it arise from community members or staff?
Can we just have a report back?
Yeah, sure, we can have a report back. Is that okay? Do we need nodding heads for a report back?
No, I think you're, you're asking for more information about whether we have it, and I think that's just an informational item that HR can report back on.
Okay. But if, if not, I would like to have a conversation about it. So I guess we can wait, we'll wait for it to come back. Also, so my last item has to do with Mr. Patrick, who was here earlier, making a comment about the street medicine USC team and grants available. And I know not too long ago, we had a conversation with council and the Housing and Homelessness Committee, Advisory Committee. Is that something we could look into doing again as a landscape regarding homelessness has shifted greatly, both with recent litigation coming out and with, you know, just there's a new executive order from our governor. So I think it might be a good time for the Advisory Committee and the council, and also our local ordinance enforcement will be celebrating a year in October, if I'm not mistaken. So it might be a good time for folks to just have a conversation about what's happening with homelessness in Culver City. Do I have, nodding heads to have that conversation?
I'm not sure I'm clear on.
Didn't we have a joint conversation with the Advisory Committee in the past? I'm recalling that.
So have them report?
I mean, there would have to be some sort of reporting, but, so we could have facts for a conversation.
I vaguely recall there may have been something like that, yeah. So is that, is that what you're asking for, is to have another joint meeting with the Advisory Committee on housing and health?
I think that would be good, because if I am not mistaken, I think housing was supposed to be on this meeting, if not the next one. Maybe we could just do that in a special together with the Advisory Committee, because I think I really appreciate Mr. Patrick's lived experience and the things that he continues to offer via email regarding, you know, just insights that he has and learnings from that body. So it might be a good time, considering a lot has changed since the last time we had this conversation, to come back together and see how things, you know, what do things look like on the ground.
Mayor, would that be a special council meeting?
I'm open to that, if colleagues are open to that.
Well, if you're going to have a joint meeting, that probably would be a special meeting.
Yeah, it would be a special meeting, whether it's on a different date or you, you have it prior to the regular meeting on the same date. You could have a special meeting on the same date as your regular meeting, just starting earlier, whatever the council's preferences, if, but, you know, if there's, there's three nodding heads to move forward.
Should we check in with the committee to see where they're at? Because I know that they're working on that.
They're working on it.
Legislation and seeing what's coming up.
Well, legislation is different than this. I'm talking about things that have already happened. Supreme Court, executive order, and our ordinance, so it's separate from state.
Okay.
At least, that's what I'm raising, because anything, our legislative cycle is just, they just got back to Sacramento this week, last week. So that'd be a different thing.
Got it.
I wouldn't mind having, starting 30 minutes early on a normal, I don't want to do an entirely separate meeting personally, but.
And we need an hour, I think, at least, for the staff report. What do y'all think?
And, and, yeah, I'm okay with that. And I, I was questioning Mr. Gordon, is about the, in my head, about street medicine. We have healthcare in action.
Again, just so people can get on one accord, there's been a lot of changes, a lot of additions. I think it would be good for the community as well to have a forum to kind of just hear from the source. There's a lot of, a lot of, a lot is happening. So I think it could be a good opportunity to just say, this is what's going on. Even the, you know, the committee, although we got the report today, they could just say, hey, this is what we're looking at, just a quick.
Are you asking for a report from TAVIS, or sort of like a year in review by TAVIS?
No, I am thinking about having us sit down with our Advisory Committee, looking, and I know we don't want to get too far in the weed city attorney, looking at where we are post Grants Pass, where we are post the executive order, where we are with our local ordinance, and just making sure that we are very clear on what we're doing in our community, as we, a lot of things have shifted over the past couple of years, really the past year.
I'm fine with it, as long as it's within the same night as an existing meeting night.
And maybe allocating an hour. So I guess the conversation would just be with the committee to see when they have time. Maybe before the end of the year, or maybe within six months.
Yeah, if there's, did I see Councilmember Puza? Okay. Did you get the?
Yes, seeing nodding heads from Councilmember Puza, Vice Mayor O'Brien, and Mayor McMorn.
The Clerk's Office in Housing and Human.
Councilmember Vera.
Sorry. The Clerk's Office in Housing and Human Services can coordinate with the respective bodies to figure out a date and time that would be on the same date as a council meeting that's already scheduled.
Yeah, maybe in the next six months. So like, not super duper rushed, but whenever, like in the next six months, where we have a council meeting an hour before.
And Mayor, I have a quick update. I received some more information on the lactation station.
Okay, what's going on?
Apparently, it sounds like that they're, they've been working on setting one up. Apparently, it's a requirement, so that's going on. But staff can get more detailed information to the council via a memo.
Thank you so much. So that's it for me. As we can move to adjournments and memory. You can go ahead, Councilmember, and then I.
Thank you. I'd like to, we lost two, two powerhouses in the community. John Reardon, who you all know from Reardon Plumbing, is always an advocate for the community, for the schools. And also Carlos Lugo, who is a dear friend of mine, the brother of Julie Lugo-Serra, former building inspector, just an all-around great guy that was all about Culver City and helping the community. We lost both of them, so we can adjourn in their memory. I'd appreciate it.
I don't have any issue with that. I want to add on, I know staff requested that we also adjourn in memory of Dorothy Secuva's mother this evening. It's my understanding she was killed by a car. And Dorothy works in transportation. So we express condolences to her and the loss of her mother in our ever-resolve to combat traffic violence. And just in light, I want to lift up the 10th anniversary of Mike Brown's murder. That was August 9th in 2014. And also lifting up Sonia Massey. It's actually, oh my gosh, it's actually my birthday now. And it's coincidentally, Sonia Massey was a 36-year-old black woman. I'm turning, I guess I'm officially 36 now, who was shot and killed in her home after calling for help. So there is a lot, a lot of work that needs to be done. We are in this all together, but I'm hopeful that we can add those three names, lift up everyone who was impacted by the loss of all innocent life, and that we continue to do this work together in Culver City. So can we have a motion in a second for those? And again, sincere condolences for all who have lost a loved one.
Thank you. I see a motion from Councilmember Vera, seconded by Councilmember Puza. You may begin voting. Councilmember Brian? Thank you. My motion passes unanimously. The time is now 12:03 a.m., and we are adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you all. See, and then do you need me to sign any?